Okay, counsel, it is Tuesday, May 20, 2025, 6:00 PM. I'll call this regular meeting of the Berry City Council to order. Counselor manager, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I have four adjustments today. This was in the packet memo, but resolutions under item 3-A were inadvertently misnumbered. It should be 2025-08 and 2025-09. So that's one adjustment. Adjustment number two is we can remove item 4H. There are no contracts for approval this week. Adjustment number three is to add a new item 4-B. This was in the language in the packet memo as well. The city attorney has requested a motion to basically authorize all the signatures and transfers that need to happen for effectuating the DPW garage purchase. So that would be an item 4-B under consent, sort of a secondary consent agenda. And then the mayor, I believe you wanted to add maybe an item 8E for the letter of support on the.
Actually, I was going to, if there's no objection from counsel, I was going to add that under 4H consent agenda. Unless you have questions.
I would actually prefer it be.
I'm sorry?
I would prefer it be separately voted on.
Okay, so that would be for which one? I guess we'll put that as for.
4-C.
I have no preference about where it goes, just.
What's that?
I have no preference about where it goes, just with.
Oh, okay, gotcha. So why don't we do a 4C on that?
Perfect.
That's okay. Okay, anything else, counsel?
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to ask to pull out 4D and 4F out of the consent agenda because I think we need to have further conversation. And I also would like to ask about the, have a discussion about the process and the policy for 8C. So I don't know if we want to do that before we do 8C, if we want to add something to the agenda, or if we, how you want to handle that.
I guess the, when you say the process.
Do you want to discuss it now, or do you want to wait until the item?
We can wait until that item. It would be appropriate under 4C.
Sure.
If you have questions about process.
Not 4C, 8C.
I'm sorry, sorry, 8C.
Yes, thank you.
And what was the first one?
I'd like to pull out 4D, the Civic Center Improvement Fund use policy, and I'd also like to pull out 4F, the amendments to the rules of procedure.
Okay, so you want four, so we're going, so we're going to have, that will go down under 4D, under the consent agenda, and then rules of procedure, that would be 4E. Is that okay?
Sure, thanks.
All right. Any other adjustments? Okay, moving right along. Visitors and communications, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Liotta, I'm a Berry City resident. And during council meetings, it has been the norm that the public is welcome to make comments at the start of the meeting during visitors and communications for all items not on the agenda. And following that norm, the public would reasonably expect to hold their comments on the public conduct ordinance until that item comes up at the end of the meeting. And I happened to notice, as I was reading through the agenda, under the consent agenda, which Counselor Spalding just mentioned, there's an item to approve amendments to council's rules of procedure.
Correct.
And in that amendment, the rule state, "At the visitors and communications section of the meeting, there will be time afforded for open public comment. The amount of time designated for public comment shall not exceed two minutes." And regarding that two-minute limit, I'd like to read three quotes that the mayor made the January 28 meeting of this council. Number one, "I'm never going to do that. You can put anything in procedure all you want. I'm never going to do it. I'm never going to say anytime someone goes over two minutes, I'm cutting them off. I won't do it." The second comment, "You can pass whatever procedure you want. I will never agree to limit someone to two minutes as a hard and fast rule. I won't do it, and I will, going forward, violate procedure, just to be clear, by giving them that five or 10 minutes, because I don't want to discourage anyone who musters the courage to come to council meeting for the first time." And the third one, "I have more important things to do than sit here with a stopwatch." The second item in that amendment is "Public comment on issues discussed by the council, if not offered during open public comment period, may be offered during the meeting with the permission of the mayor." So I want to be clear in understanding something. If the rules of procedure are adopted tonight before the public conduct ordinance, will any member of the public who wishes to speak when that discussion comes up be allowed to do so, or should they speak now under visitors and communications? And will they be allowed to speak for longer than two minutes?
Whatever floats your boat, and maybe.
So my, my vote would float if people could make comments when that comes up on the agenda. Per what you said in January, they can go over two minutes to make that comment, and that everyone who wishes to speak to that will be allowed to speak.
So, so you just want to put me on the spot tonight?
No.
And the answer is, and no, that's fine. That's fine, I am a big boy, I've done this for a lot of years.
There's a lot of people here that wish to speak to that.
Can I speak?
And I don't want this order of things on the agenda to prevent people who wish to speak from speaking.
If comments are repetitive, if people simply are making the same point, and the council has heard that point over and over and over, I hope that people could hold that to two minutes. If people are offering information that perhaps council hasn't heard before, I'll give a little bit of latitude, and I stand by those comments.
And everyone will be allowed to speak, or should they speak now, under visitors and communications?
You'll be allowed to speak under, I assume that people want to address 8C on the agenda? They'll be allowed to speak under 8C, that item is on the agenda, that would be the appropriate time to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. Oh, Bern, I was going to let Bern go first.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Bernadette Rose, and I want to welcome Counselor Ruthier and Counselor Higardner. And Jeff, you've been here for a really long time, it's been over a few months. I live in Ward 3, and most years I show up to bring you good tidings of tick prevention. And I want to also thank Lisa. I had that question too, about when it would be appropriate to share our thoughts. So I'm going to leave this with you, Mr. Manager. These are not quite as flashy as the ones that had pictures of ticks on them. I find it to be a little discouraging that the state went away from a real bold graphic. These are for DPW cemetery staff, places like that. The city can order and does order some of these kinds of things, but I always try to bring them in so that you have an idea of what's out there. The booklets aren't available anymore right now. These are things you put on your shower, they peel off, they don't stick, but they're like a static cling kind of thing. And I don't know what kinds of showers, but I expect there, we have some around for city employees. These are stickers and our little, whoops, little tick cards. And I bring these in to city council, not just to the community, because I care about our public works people and our safety people. And I think it's really important, and I know that we are doing a better job making sure that they're informed. I hope that every truck or every vehicle and every group of people has our tick pullers or fine tip tweezers and things for removing ticks, because one of the things we know is that the sooner you can get a tick off, the less opportunity there is for infection. There's a lot of myths and there's a lot of information. I have to say that the Vermont Department of Health is doing a really good job with prevention information, and the CDC has some. We're not able to get the fiberglass tick signs anymore, and I have a few of those. Chris Rousseau is going to get some from me for up in the new path in the cow pasture and there, if you know of any other places. Michael, where you live, and the kids go down and out back to the, to the bike path, there's probably a lot of kids that travel down through that swath.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if maybe you might want one that you could put up, so just to get parents and everybody's attention, that when kids are going through those places. The other thing I would ask as a prevention, and I know that our DPW is really stretched, but when we can, on a street like mine, that's fairly narrow, when the grasses grow up, it makes it really hard for pedestrians or people walking their dogs to avoid going into grasses that are infested with ticks, and we're seeing them everywhere, and they're reporting at about 50%. Testing is showing 50% of the ticks that we're getting, the black-legged ticks, are infected, so. And then the same with the bike path that comes up from the school and goes down, trying to see if we can widen the care of that so that when people are walking past each other, it's wide enough so that two people can be at least abreast, so that people aren't walking into the grasses, which are also carrying ticks, and there are a lot of deer that travel through there. So those are just my asks of trying to help keep our community as healthy as possible. Ticks are being reported by both Berry Town and Berry City schools when kids are coming in from recess and going out in their eco classes, and so working to help the superintendent be more informed. And Cheryl, would you like, I usually will make a list of websites and things and give them, I used to give them to Carol, would you like me to send you an email with that to distribute to the, within the minutes? Thank you very much, and Nicholas Alves Levy is here for that.
Thank you. Bern, do you mind putting them on that table right there? I'll grab them on my way out, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bern.
Really happy to, I'm not happy that I know about it firsthand, I'm happy that I can help somebody else not become ill.
Mr. McKenzie.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think mostly you know me, although I haven't met Counselor Hilgarten here before. I'm Steve McKenzie, and I'm here as Vice President of Berry Area Development. And I'm really pleased this evening to be here to introduce Josh Jones as the new Executive Director. It took us eight months, months to find the right person, but there's no doubt in my mind, we've found the right person. Josh comes to us extremely well qualified. Literally checked all the boxes, Berry native, has worked for the partnership before, knows the, knows the community, and he knows an awful lot about economic development. I'll let him toot his own horn, but in July, I'll become president, and Josh and I have already coordinated, and I look forward to working with Josh to sort of start a new chapter with BADC, and continue our collective efforts to promote economic development for the city and move the city forward. And with that, I'll turn it over to Josh and let him make whatever remarks.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. I'm happy to be back in Berry. I spent about, almost a decade in Berry, working at Community Capital Mont, and as the Executive Director for the Berry Partnership. So I've done tours in Montpelier and Randolph recently, and so I'm happy to be back here. Yes, there's challenges, but there's a lot of opportunities, and that's what attracted me to come back to Berry. And I'm excited to be working with Steve and the rest of the board. I'm on the job now for about 33 hours, so I got my phone and I have my emails set up. So I'd like to be able to touch base with, with all of you, actually, over the coming weeks, to talk to you and hear your, your thoughts about Berry downtown. So again, feel free to reach out to me at any time too, to ask any questions, but looking forward to working with you all to make Berry, you know, prosperous downtown, and just good to be here.
Any questions, counsel? Or comments? Yes, sir.
Anything in particular coming into the job that you'd really like to see happen? If you could, you know, just pick one project that you'd really like to focus on or see really happen to make Berry better, what would it be? Just going in kind of, I don't want to say blind, but, you know, 30-something hours into the job, you know, just shoot out the world, what would you really want?
All the contacts to be already in my phone and my email.
The networking opportunities?
Yeah, yeah, you know, what I've heard, because, you know, I talked to a lot of people in the community before accepting this position, and I think connecting with the business community and building up relationships is probably the number one priority right now, to hear from the businesses and how to support them.
Okay.
So that's, that's right up there.
And that's something we can definitely do as a city council and as a community. Thanks for being here, sir.
Anyone else? Josh, couldn't be happier to have you aboard. Counselor Guston and I attended the CDBG DR hearing last week, and we both walked away from that hearing thinking exactly the same thing, we're going to need more people. You know, that is an exciting opportunity with over $50 million coming to Washington County, the limited federal match, you know, the broad projects that that money will support, and of course, that goes to 23 floating. So it's almost as though the CDBG DR program was literally tailor-made for Berry, but they're going to roll it out quickly. They're looking to award, counsel, was it October?
October, yeah.
October-ish, they're looking to award.
Occasions in August.
The first round, they know there's going to be, they suspect there'll be a second round of award, most of the money will go out in the first round. They have made room for a third round, but don't believe, and you know all this. So, yeah, I suspect we're going to keep you very busy, and thank you for accepting the position, and thank you for your service, appreciate you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Do you have a hand?
Oh, I'm sorry, Amy?
I just have a quick little update. So I've been serving as the city's representative to the Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District Board, and I haven't really had many updates to bring from that. This is separate from the Berry Area Development, by the way. So I don't know if you wanted to comment on Berry Area Development, or I should go ahead.
Thank you.
They're waiting. But, so I've had a couple of updates about the moving process, but it seems like their outreach folks have been sharing things on Front Porch Forum, on Facebook, on their newsletter, that sort of thing. So at one of the board meetings, I kind of asked what would be the best way for city council to get updates, and they recommended subscribing to the newsletter. On their website, at the bottom of the page, there's a newsletter that you can get, they don't email really frequently, but that's a good way for, that would also apply to businesses too, so that is a little bit relevant, get updates on their move. They're currently moving from the closed extra recycling center in the North End and their office in Montpelier up the hill to Berlin. So their, their services are a little out of normal right now, but they're, they're working on moving up there. A couple of things I thought about is now they're going to be physically out of Berry, so it's a little less convenient for residents. So if any of you are hearing from constituents about needs they're having, please let me know, and I'll try to communicate those to the, to the managers up there. And then also, you know, as the, eventually when the public works garage moves up, if they end up having a lot of materials that might be appropriate for that, there might be ways the, the district could help with that. And if there's anything for green update next year, I'd love to see that, get it more into dealing with recycling and hazards. But the website, just so folks have it, is CVSWMD.org, so Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District, the acronym CVSWMD.org. At the bottom, there's a little newsletter link to sign up for.
Thank you. Anyone else under visitors and communications? Okay, hearing and saying no one, council will move on to item 3A, will be approving resolution 2025-08, which is recognition of National EMS Week, and resolution 2025-09, which is recognition of National DPW Week. Motion would be in order. So moved. Thank you.
Seconded.
Take your pick. Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Counsel, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We're going to be approving the minutes for the meeting of 5:00, 6:25. Do you have any office licenses and permits?
Yes, I do.
Okay. We'll be approving the clerks' office licenses and permits, why don't you review those now if you would be.
Sure, I have one permit from Emzley's The Floor, she'd like to have an art hanging mural unveiling on Saturday, June 21st, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. It would require closure of Creamery Court Street for that period, and it has been approved by all departments, and she would just like approval tonight.
Thank you very much. We'll be approving, counsel also, item 4C, that is volunteer appointments. Both of these appointments have the recommendation of the chair. That will be Sandy Ruse on the Police Advisory Committee and Steve McKenzie on the Transportation and Public Works Committee. Item Ford, well, it's 4E on your agenda, will be to ratify the 5:00, 6:25 appointment of Cheryl Mativia as Acting Treasurer, will be pointing that one. And item 4G, that's on your agenda, will be to approve the local emergency management plan. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
And a second, please? Moved and seconded, any discussion? Yes.
I have some comments or corrections for the minutes. So on the second page of the minutes, under 4B, I think it would be important to recognize that the mayor recused himself and that Sam Stockwell was presiding at that time, and there's no motion there, and I'm assuming that we did make a motion, so that should be included as well. Under the second, no, fourth bullet of the City Clerk and Treasurer's report, it's just a spelling error, however, we are still accepting, it should be accepting, A-C-C-E-P-T-I-N-G. Under eight, new business for the audit, it should, I, in my opinion, give a brief summary that there were no findings, because it doesn't say that, and if someone were to look back and just want to get a very quick, you know, or have a quick recollection of what happened for the audit presentation, it should probably say that we didn't have any findings of note. And did we approve that, or did we just accept it and move on? I can't remember.
Which item was that, I'm sorry?
The audit.
The audit, no, we don't approve the, yeah, it's an independent contract, so that's the auditor's opinion that is being presented to us, so we don't have latitude to accept.
Okay. And then under F, for the VCRD Leadership Summit, did we vote on that to have Amanda go?
We.
Said we would figure it out separately, we did not vote on it.
We did not.
Thank you. And finally, just another spelling error, under Roundtable, Counselor Guston, it says phrase, and I think it just means praised, I think that's what the word should be. So if I could just enter those amendments into the, or corrections for the minutes, that would be great, thank you.
So noted. Counsel, anything else?
There was one other spelling or word error in that same section where it said tenor instead of tenure.
Got you. Got them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else, counsel? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, counsel, we are at 4A, we are approving the city warrants for the week of 5:21, 25, and we are ratifying the week of 5:14, 25, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you very much.
I just need to note an abstention because I'm in the warrants this week, so I would prefer that's.
So noted, your abstention is noted, thank you. So counsel, we're at item 4B, this is the.
Garage.
DPW garage, I'll need to recuse myself from this, this vote, obviously, but interestingly, we could move back to.
Maybe we should do that first.
Yeah, maybe we, maybe we ought to move back to the, to the, I'm going to rearrange the agenda yet again, and why don't we talk a little bit about approving the amendments to the rules of procedure, if anyone has any questions? So we're actually going to do that first. Yes?
So my questions are, I, I'm fine with the change for changing the counselor present with the longest period of service, that's fine, it doesn't really matter. The question I have is about number 18, that's been added. "Any email, text message, or electronic communication pertaining to an agenda item or a subject under discussion that is received by the mayor or any counselor during a council meeting shall be considered a public record that is subject to a Public Records Act request." And I wonder, what is the catalyst for adding this to this, the rules of procedure?
Really, just onboarding. I, I don't pay a whole lot of attention, and as I was reading through the rules of procedure, I had spoken with our newest counselors, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood. You know, on occasion, I'll get a phone call from my daughter, or I'll get a text message from my daughter, Karen, that is not pertinent. I'm sure you do as well, Nicholas, when the boys are going to bed. I know, I sit right next to you. But if you're, if counselors are texting back and forth, that is in fact public record. And as I thought about, you know, talking to counselors and saying, look, if you have council business on your cell phone, that could be a public record. Obviously, I'd encourage you to use your, you know, not your personal email, use your city email, and as I was thinking of that, I thought it would be a good reminder, to simply remind all of us in the interest of transparency, that if counselors are texting back and forth during a meeting, I'm not saying you are or aren't, or you're receiving text messages that pertain to business that we're conducting, that can in fact, and has in fact, been held to be a public record.
So I just want to ask a clarifying question, if I may, is, are you saying that only text messages that pertain, that are among this group, or anyone who might text me, who might be watching online, let's say, and sends me a text message, which I, I don't even have my phone, it's in my purse, so, but that would be open to public record?
It could be. I'm not saying it is or it isn't, there are certain electronic means of communication, for example, communication between counselors is absolutely public record during a meeting, if it pertains to the council's business, or the business on the agenda, the business that we're discussing. So no, I'm not saying that necessarily every, if a constituent sends you a question during a meeting and says, could you please ask this, that may or may not be considered public record.
I guess.
I guess we'd have our attorney, if someone made a public records request, we would have our attorney determine whether that was a public record.
Well, if I might, I guess I'm going to push a little further, because if I, if it's part of a public records request because it's somehow influencing what's happening here, but I don't read it until I get home, then how is it a public, part of public record when I don't even see it?
That's why we have courts.
But so has this been run by?
I can't answer that question.
Has this been run by the city attorney to see if we should include that in our, in our rules of procedure?
I don't think we need to, we can amend the rules of procedure pretty much. Is there something that you object to with regard to?
No, I'm just trying to understand what we're, why it's there, that's all, I'm just trying to understand.
In the interest of transparency and to make counselors aware that if you're text messaging back and forth during a meeting, that can in fact be considered a public record. Yes?
I just want to, two things, first of all, I believe this just clarify, this is already state law, right? This is already, this is not new. This is already in state law, the specifics of precisely which text message would, as the mayor suggests, have to be sort of determined in the public records request. And the second thing is, this is a very small niche, but there have been occasions when I have been on Zoom, because I was unable to in person, and people have sent me DMs or private messages through the Zoom chat, and I have never responded to them or engaged in them, but that could fall under this area, I don't particularly care if it falls under this, I'm just saying, there's no way to capture those. They disappear, because they're private messages, they disappear as soon as the Zoom. So we just would have to understand that in that very specific slice of communication, which I know has happened to me, I don't know if it's happened to other counselors when they've been attending on Zoom, we would have to understand that those would not be captured and would not be available for a public records request.
Right, well, you can't, you can't provide what you don't have.
Yep, I just want to make that upfront clear, that that is a situation that has happened to me, and we would not be able to capture it.
Totally understood. Counsel, deering, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I think we already covered it, we're good, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Could I, could I just ask one more question? Under E, procedures, other public bodies, is that part for committees? Because I was trying to understand why everything was basically repeated.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
It is. Okay, so counselors, you've seen the amendments that those were in your packet, so you should have had time to review them. Any other question? If not, otherwise, if you're inclined, a motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
Thank you. And second?
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, now we can move on to the next item. I did have to thank Counsel Deering, I believe, because I need to recuse myself. I think you would have to preside. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
Okay. Please do.
So this is.
I'll go stand over here.
Item 4B on the agenda. The motion is to accept the warranty deed for the city's purchase of the plus or minus 6.43 acre property at 277 Morrison Road in Berrytown. We're looking to approve a warrant for $3,000,010,000 to the city attorney's IOLTA account for the purchase to waive recording fees and authorize the city manager execute the closing statement and any other documents necessary and advisable to close on the transaction, subject to final review and approved by the city attorney. And we're looking for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
That'll pass. Thank you, sir.
Nice job, Counsel. How'd you like it?
Always good.
Okay.
You're just going to keep making us vote on your garage, Nicholas.
There you go. So Counsel, we are at, did we have a four? Did we have a 4C?
We had a 4C, which is the letter of support.
Ah, great. Thank you very much. Yeah, I submitted that. So Counsel, I sent to you today, throughout the legislative session, as I explained, we've been monitoring certain housing provisions. One of those provisions was in S-102, which is one of the early bills. S-102 was spent in committee for quite a while. And within S-102, Sections 26 through 30, S-102 was the governor's housing bill. There were some changes to the wetlands provisions. One would be to allow the use of more updated maps rather than the current, you know, boots on the ground, wetlands delineation process. And in addition, the bill would reduce the wetlands buffer from 50 feet to 25 feet. So as I said, this is something that I've been following throughout the legislative session, certainly been following all of the housing bills. Things are happening very quickly as the legislature is winding down. As I said in the letter, Secretary Moore has testified in, in support of these provisions, at least twice that I know of, perhaps, you know, perhaps more times. So in Berry, what this would mean for the Prospect Heights problem, Prospect Heights development, is that we could obviously develop, we believe, more housing units. I mean, simply reducing the buffer from 50 to 25 feet would allow us to, you know, build perhaps dozens more housing units. Again, something that I've been working on with the manager, we've been following, and it would appear that this week, there could be a couple of vehicles that would allow those wetlands provisions, 26 through 30. They could pass in a number of ways. They could be tacked on to another bill. I believe there's one or two more bills that would be pertinent that are coming out of committee this week, and those could also be offered as a simple floor amendment in the House or Senate. So I'd like to just offer this. I have been in contact with, I know Counsel Booton, not sure that I've spoken directly with Counsel Cummings or Counsel Perchlik on this issue. I have been in contact with Representative Wazisak and Senator Watson directly. But I'd like, with your support, and I believe I have supported the manager on this as well, I'd like to send this along to our representatives and ask them to support these provisions if they're given the opportunity. Questions?
I have a question.
Yes?
So we briefly looked at some property of the city with, on Allen Street with some of the wetland stuff. Do you think that that's going to change and that we'll be able to get some housing in that potentially?
You know, it's difficult to say. We had more Prospect Heights in mind, because, of course, with the weather we've had, the issue, the issue for us is really the process, you know, the delineation process where you're literally boots on the ground. It takes weeks, you know, once you can possibly get started. And then obviously, you know, the reduction in the buffer is obvious. You know, if the buffer reduces, the buildable land increases, and you can have more housing units. So, you know, for us, it's just saving time and money, and perhaps even, you know, an entire construction season. So I, but I couldn't speak, I haven't looked at any other sites, so I really couldn't speak to any other sites on Allen Street other than this one.
Sure. Thank you.
So the 50-foot buffer, is that a bad day? And you can just cut it in half? Is that going to be?
Well, it's, it's codified in state statute, so the wetlands buffer is 50 feet. Under certain circumstances, it would, this would reduce that buffer from 50 to 25. So obviously, when you, you know, when you imagine a large area, it gives you quite a bit more buildable area. And, you know, I mean, there are those who say, hey, the buffer should be 100 feet, and there are those who say the buffer should be 5 feet. This was the governor's proposal. This has been supported by Secretary Moore. She's testified in support of it a number of times, as I said. So again, I'm just hoping to get these provisions passed, because they would directly benefit Berry. Representative Wazisak, first of all, welcome, and do you have a comment?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. Just for, just for what it's worth, I have spoken with the members of, so this would have to go through both the House Environment Committee, as well as the Senate Natural Resources Committee, and I know the mayor has been meeting with Senator Watson about this issue as well. I, you know, I support what we're trying to do here. I just wanted to provide the context that the concern is that allowing more development in or near wetlands would increase the chances of further landslides down the line. If you, you know, build heavier things near wetlands, they are more likely to move than less heavy things built in or near wetlands. So, you know, I'd be happy to have, to work with the committees to try and get, I know that you've met with Senator Watson. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you've had the chance to actually, either you or the manager have had the chance to actually offer testimony to either of those two committees. I would be happy to try and make that happen over the next week and a half, two weeks that we have left of the legislative session. But this, this is something that has been discussed, and I just wanted to offer the full counsel the context of the concerns that members of those committees have. And my understanding is that the concern is less with the maps and more with the moving from a 50 to 25 for the wetlands. So again, not saying you shouldn't pass this letter, not saying I disagree with what you're saying, just wanted to offer more context as to what I have heard of some of the pushback, because you are correct that Secretary Moore in the Agency of Natural Resources has supported this position.
Thank you. Yes?
Thank you. I asked for this to be pulled out, because I do agree with the majority of it, but I do have deep concerns about the wetlands buffer change. I, and we received this with not enough time for me to personally feel comfortable checking on the science of it, other than the briefest possible conversation. And also, the manager and Tess Taylor and I attended a flood collaborative meeting last week, in which we had a very good presentation about the wetlands along Otter Creek that have provided significant flood resilience to communities from Middlebury to Rutland. So I'm not, I guess I don't have, I haven't had time to really think that through, so I'm not comfortable supporting it, is why I asked for this to be pulled out.
Yeah, I understand, which is why I paid attention to the testimony of the Secretary of the Agency of Natural Resources. That department is charged with protecting our environment and our wetlands. And she has, you know, like any science, I have looked at it, Counselor. And as I said earlier, there are those who think the wetland buffer should be 5 feet, and there are those who think it should be 100 feet, and tons of opinions in between. I'm relying on the Secretary of the Agency of Natural Resources. Yes?
My name is Danielle Zarsky. I'm a Berry City resident, and I also used to work as a wetlands ecologist. And the way that the state evaluates wetlands is they look at 10 functions and values that wetland provides. And two of the functions and values are water quality protection and flood storage. And so in general, when you have that boots-on-the-ground delineation, they go over those functions and values, and then can basically quantify what your, what your functions and values are. And so I think it would be really important, at least for this site, to see, like, is their flood storage function, is it significant? Is their water quality protection function, is it significant, before we're okay with that? In terms of the research, research shows for wetlands and just riparian areas in general, 150 to 300 feet is actually where you get the most value out of buffers. So a 50-foot buffer is kind of a minimum, and shrinking that down to 25 can really impact the function of those wetlands. So I do think it would be important to, to determine what the function is of that wetland, and if we'd be, you know, shrinking flood storage in the city by minimizing it. Thanks.
Understood. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions or comment? Like I said, these are provisions that were presented by the governor, supported by the secretary. They would certainly be of benefit to Berry, the Prospect Heights project in particular, so I am supporting them. So, without any further ado, we did have a motion, we did have a second, I believe. Is that correct?
Don't think I heard one.
No? Was there a motion to approve the letter?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any other comment or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
Noted. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Would you like roll call vote, Counsel? Were you good with it? I heard what I heard. Okay. Then we will move along. Counsel, I don't believe we did a 4D.
Yes, we did. Civic Center.
We are, we're just jumping all over the alphabet now.
Oh, and Macaulay, you're killing me tonight.
It's good.
Okay. Counsel, we're at the Approval for the Civic Center Improvement Fund Use Policy. Counselors Spaulding, did you have any particular questions on this issue?
My question, my question actually was just, could we table this until our next meeting for the simple fact that we didn't have the full policy? And I don't think it's good practice to vote on a policy that we've only maybe had a few minutes to read. I really like to be thorough, as you maybe can tell when I'm reading things. And so just giving this a cursory glance, it seems fine, but at the same time, I'd like to actually spend some time with it. So if that's okay, I'd like to just table this until our next meeting.
Yeah, we don't, do we have anything pending on this?
It's not urgent.
Okay. Any issue with that, Counsel? Then we'll take this off the agenda. You'll see it on, I believe, June 3rd.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Ms. City Clerk, time for your report.
Very brief report. The elections are finished. The official results can be viewed on our website. We have them running on the banner. You will also find them under the Clerk tab, under the Elections Division of that tab. Three of the results are sitting here, right here on this podium tonight, and I'd like to say congratulations and welcome. Other than that, we're winding down the fourth quarter tax collection, and that's what we are doing in the Clerk's office this past two weeks.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Awesome. Do we have anything under liquor or cannabis control?
I have one item.
Go for it.
Summer Street Tavern, their liquor license have been already approved, but she would like to add outside consumption to her portfolio.
Does that have?
It has been approved by Brad and both Nick Copping as well.
Okay. So it has the appropriate approval. Anyone care to make that motion?
So moved.
It's a second?
Second.
Okay, he'll take the second. Is there any discussion, Counsel? Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple updates for the Counsel. So we, I'm sure you all experienced the severe thunderstorms we had over the weekend. We had some localized street flooding in areas that have poor drainage. One of them happens to be right outside my house, and it's similar to what happens in other parts of the city where the storm drain is just undersized, and so the water backs up. You can see it bubbling, and it's scary, and, you know, then when the drains catch up, the water goes away. So, so that's what was experienced. We're not aware of any major damage that was reported. We had crews monitoring our hotspots, our trash racks, and so we were fairly confident throughout the event that we were okay. It was just a, you know, it can be traumatic, as we've given everything we've gone through the last couple of years, but it was limited to sort of street flooding. And I think my understanding, I wasn't, I took my own advice and didn't drive because I didn't have to, but my understanding is that Main Street did okay, given the new paving, that the paving is not creating those sort of rivers down the street that get pushed into the businesses. So I didn't personally see it, but that's the report I got, that that water tended to stay off of Main Street. I do want to remind people, it's a great time to sign up for Regroup. We were sending out messages on Regroup, so if you haven't done so, it's easy, it's easy to download and takes about 13 steps to apply, but there's a really detailed information packet for doing so. Messages right to your phone, you don't have to go looking for them. And then I just also want to remind people, in those circumstances, I know there's a tendency to want to go to social media. If you see anything, or if you're in danger, if you're concerned about something, your call should be to dispatch, and our emergency responders. So just want to remind residents of that. Merchant Row paving starts tomorrow, weather permitting. So if you, probably if you came to the meeting, you saw sort of how much work they've done back there. They're going to start with the section near Nelson's and the Quarry and the Lenny's parking lot, and then they will finish that first, and then this section over here closest to City Hall will be an overlay. So that's very exciting to see pavement start to go down tomorrow, hopefully if the weather holds. And I really appreciate, I think it's been good compliance with the detours, appreciate that people have respected that. And just a reminder that if you're trying to come to City Hall, if you're trying to come to the businesses, they're all still open, so please make your way downtown. There's free parking. We're not doing any meter enforcements along Main Street, Church Streets. Mark Nicholson has made available the old Clark's feedlot, the Elm Street parking lot, and the Seminary Street parking lots are also available to use. So those are all free parking, no meter enforcement, just our businesses are open, City Hall's open. Please, please come downtown. Janet asked me to remind folks that the rental registry is going out by the end of the week. The due date is June 30th, so we're giving landlords over a month to get this submitted and turned in. As many of you know, this is, registration is required for multifamily buildings and non-owner occupied single-family homes. So that is, as I said, end of the week, due June 30th. And had a chance to attend the Winuski River Watershed Planning Meeting. I missed the first one, but I had a chance to go with, Counselor Guston was there, and Tess was there as well. Really positive, I think it's really important that we're meeting at the regional level about these flooding issues. I think the, the things we do and other towns do don't end at our borders, right? So I think we had really good conversations about, you know, we're doing some interesting projects in the city, um, but, you know, we talked about that some of our best flood mitigation might happen in Williamstown, right, where the water starts. So really interesting to start talking with our, our neighbors at the, um, regional level. Um, and I, I know it's, it's tough to see, I think Counselor Guston, Tess might weigh in on it, but, you know, I know it's hard to see, we've had a tough couple of years, but I think taking, one of the takeaways from the meeting was, we're actually, I think we're, we're quite ahead of a lot of our neighboring communities, and so that was, um, you know, it was, it was good to see. I think there's a lot, there's been a lot of good work that everyone's put in together, um, and we're, you know, we have a lot of good, good things to point to in, in Berry. Uh, and then finally, just to remind people, uh, you know, if, if spring ever arrives, that the, the Berry Town Yard Waste Disposal continues to be open for the spring season, so make your way up there. Saturdays, 8:00 AM to 12:00, and Tuesdays, 10:00 AM to 3:00. Um, and we just ask that everyone follows the rules on the flyer on our website and social media so that we can, uh, continue this, this really good partnership with the town. So that is it for me.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, sir.
Can you just talk a little bit about the water situation and when that's gonna be resolved?
Yeah, so there's a small, very narrow targeted boil water notice, uh, that happened due to a valve issue on Allen Street. It impacts, I believe, uh, 16 units, uh, so we hand-delivered notices to those people. Uh, the, the elementary school was impacted and their leadership was, was notified as well. Typically with a boil water notice, it's about 24 to 48 hours before the time that we get, um, the results back that we can lift it. So we're, we're on, on that clock now, and so within 24 to 48 hours, we expect it to be resolved.
When did we notify the people about?
Yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah, yep.
So when did the tests go in today?
Uh, they should have done the, the sampling today, yeah. So we should be on a 24, maybe tomorrow.
Best-case scenario, maybe tomorrow.
Probably the next.
But definitely by Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we expect.
And, you know, just so people are aware, uh, I mean, you know, I get it for a community that's been so impacted by flooding, um, you know, we constantly monitor, i- if there's an inch of rainfall in half an hour, you know, Nicholas, Joe, folks at, uh, DPW, Public Safety, you know, we're monitoring that situation. And, you know, my phone at a certain point, and, and I knew it would, started to blow up as people, you know, were getting nervous, um, but I just want people to understand that, that we monitor it constantly. So the Regroup, our message system, everyone should have gotten a message that we sent out and let people know, uh, you know, as we monitor these situations, um, as the downpours are happening, you're not gonna get a message from the city saying everything's going to be fine. I mean, we have to wait until we're sure, you know, so we don't want to give people a fault, you know, you don't want to err and give people a false sense of security, but I can assure you that, you know, there was a lot of communication going on, and there was a ton of monitoring going on. So the Regroup system is really, is really the best system, but, um, you know, unfortunately, we're getting, we're getting better at it. So, uh, but if anyone, you know, if, if you think we weren't sending out enough messages or, you know, that's, that's sort of where we're coming from. We don't want to tell people it's going to be fine when you're literally 30 minutes into the storm, and as accurate as Doppler, you know, the Doppler weather maps are, they're not perfect. And, and we learned that back in 2023. Doppler said that we were gonna get about half the amount of rainfall that we ended up getting. So, you know, it's just these localized storms. But if people do have any, you know, suggestions, let us know, but please sign up for Regroup.
Can I make one suggestion?
Yes, of course.
Do you have a boil water notice regardless of how few the residents are, that we do send out a message to let people know?
On Regroup?
Yeah. I mean, at the very base.
So that's a decision we take on a case-by-case basis. I know that, um, when we issue a boil water notice, there's, um, you know, certainly a lot of concern and panic about who it impacts, and so when we have a situation where it impacts 16 households and we're able to get them a direct notification, we, we generally err on the side of, of doing that because, uh, then you don't have everyone going to a map and trying to figure out, is it me, is it not me? Um, and then the school is also a population we can isolate, so it's, it's, it's a population where we can get to the leadership of the school and let them know and let them make a decision. So certainly if it's a neighborhood, if it's a street, um, if it's a, if it's an area, we absolutely do Regroup, and we try to do a map to show people where that is, but, um, you know, if we make a sort of a judgment call of its, you know, if it's a volume of people that we can reach with our Water Department staff knocking on the doors and talking to them, that we prefer to do that so that we don't cause a, it may cause more misunderstanding, um, with, with a broader message. So it's, it's a judgment call, um, but in this situation, because we were able to get it personally delivered, um, we thought that was the, the better approach, and the school was, um, you know, was, was notified, and they were able to, to, you know, do what they do with the information.
You good?
Yes.
I did just want to add, uh, to the manager's report of the, I can never remember the name, the Winuski Flood Resiliency Collaborative?
Collaborative, I think it's collaborative.
I keep adding extra words every time I say it. Um, uh, that, that really was an, an excellent meeting, um, and that I did come away with it feeling a tiny bit smug because Berry City was called out by a couple of people as really having a good progress and a, and a community voice, uh, on our work on flood resiliency going forward. So that felt, that felt both really good to be recognized for the hard work the city has been doing, um, and also really good to, to connect with, with other folks and get new ideas. Um, and as the city manager said, that this is, uh, a watershed, a river-wide, uh, challenge. The storm this weekend, we had street flooding, but, uh, communities in Mad River Valley were, were very badly hit. Um, and this is going to keep happening. I know we keep saying that. Uh, so the more that we can knit together, um, our work, uh, the better, so I look forward to future meetings of that.
Thank you. Yes.
Can I ask a quick question about that? Was it a, is it voluntary, like, or does, does someone from each community show up?
It's voluntary.
Voluntary.
Yeah.
But do most people, most communities show up?
Uh, there were some that were not represented, I think.
So it's, so it's technically for like the entire Winuski River base, basin? I'm so not sure if I'm using the right word there, I'm sorry. So that means that everyone up to Burlington could come, um, and I was not at the first meeting, I was out of town for the first meeting, but they said there were a lot of communities from Chittenden County that came to the first meeting, and that this one was a little bit, I'm seeing nods, uh, and that this one was a little bit more Washington County, uh, heavy. Um, it was, this one was in Duxbury. Um, so yes, any community can show up. We had community members from Berry, Danielle was, was there, sorry, I'm sorry to call you out, uh, for the River Access Task Force, uh, and other folks were there from other communities, not necessarily in an official capacity, just as something they were interested and wanted to work on.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Anything else, counsel? Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to item 8A on the agenda. This is the Berry Pride Event Update. You can, as many as you want to bring. Erica.
Come on, the more the merrier.
Yeah.
You came in matching t-shirts, you should show them off.
Just watch that chair when you sit. They tilt me.
So, thanks for, for inviting us. Uh, we are, uh, some of the few members of Berry Pride. Uh, my name is Erica Rell, I go by the pronoun say them. So, um, for those of you who don't know, Berry Pride's on our fifth year. We started very small in somebody's backyard, um, and we've grown a little bit. Um, this year, we're actually starting out strong. We actually have, uh, a physical sponsor, um, out in the open, who's our 501(c)(3) nonprofit. So all of our donations to Berry Pride are tax deductible this year. Um, so, uh, we actually have, uh, sponsorship from, uh, Forbes Finest, Rainbow Bridge, People's Health and Wellness, the Parenthood of New England, Naive Melody, who's not in Berry, but they're, they're on Player, um, on Player Veterinary Hospital, and Sarah Millah Law, who's right here in Berry. Um, and we have a lot of support from Pearl Street Pizza, Berry Social Club, and Wind River Environmental. Again, they're not in Berry, but we, we'll support all the support we can get. Um, so we have, um, a lot of events this year because it's year five. We have, uh, a silent auction, um, from prizes from Exile on Main Street, A&amp;R Market, and Nelson's Hardware, and we're hoping we're gonna have more coming up. Um, we have, um, all week, we have stuff going on. Um, we have, uh, Slowpoke Exchange is putting on a dance party. Uh, Tally's is, is doing hopefully a karaoke night. We haven't exactly done all of the stuff out yet. Foxy's is doing an amateur, um, drag show. Olive Ridge Library is putting on a movie night for us on Monday, um, and also doing a family-friendly dance party on the Night of Pride. And, um, we're, uh, the Day of Pride, we're having a Drag Queen Story Hour. I forgot to mention Pride is June 7th, so I'm gonna get excited about all this. Um, and also on the, the Day of Pride Bad, which is, uh, Bethel Area Drag, um, is coming up and spending some time with us. And also House of Cocktail, and these are family-friendly. Um, all of our events are family-friendly. And this year is a little different. In the park, we're gonna have what we're calling a Beverage Garden for Pearl Street Pizza, because, you know, it's family-friendly, we need to have beverages. Um, and so we're, we're having a lot of events. We're gonna have, um, uh, Pride Bingo at Pearl Street Pizza, thanks to the Berry Social Club. Um, and this year, we're gonna have, there's a lot of businesses that are really opening their hearts to us. So we think this year, we've kind of outgrown the park. We hope not, because we love seeing the park and all of rainbows. Um, we're a group of volunteers, we all have families, we all have jobs, um, but there's seven of us working on this. Um, and we just love it downtown, just seeing all the families come out, um, and seeing just rainbows everywhere. Um, we're a group of people in the community, LGBTQ plus, and we're also allies, working together to put this on. Again, there's only seven of us, some of us are here tonight, some of us are with our families, but this is what we do. We've been doing this for five years, um, and this year, thankfully, people have been begging us for this, we have bathrooms. So that's a huge thing. Um, thanks to one of our supporters, which is Wind River Environmental, um, they've graciously cut us a deal for bathrooms this year. So we're working hard. Uh, we haven't got everything done yet, but, um, we have three weeks till Pride, and we're, we're working hard to bring the best Pride Berry's ever seen. So thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight. And we have these amazing shirts, um, that were done by, um, a local artist, and they're gonna be, some of them, some of us are gonna be for sale this year. So thank you for inviting us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, counsel?
I, I have a question. If you, uh, you said you were, you feel like you're outgrowing the park?
Mm-hmm.
The city park. Um, one of the things that we talked about, um, in the master planning session was, um, for events like this, maybe shutting off Church Street to provide more space, and I wonder if that sort of thing would be helpful for?
So we, we did, with this year, uh, so last year, we shut Church Street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Um, and we shut Church, so we actually have, um, the churches have, last year, the churches were invited to, for Pride, and they've, um, they want to come back.
Oh, cool.
Um, so we have food trucks again. Um, Steve, what food trucks do we have this year?
Mahorozza Spice, Morse Block, Deli, and Pearl Street.
Yeah. So they're coming back this year. Um, and, um, so, so we have the churches, they're, they're coming back this year, and they're being wonderful to us. So they've allowed us, um, they didn't plan anything for June 7th because they want to come back this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so we, we will have Church Street closed again, correct?
Yes, we will have Church Street closed again.
So that'll be, Church Street will be closed to, uh, to traffic.
Yeah.
So if someone wants your entire schedule for the week, is there someplace they could get that?
Yes, we are putting it together this Saturday. Um, we're gonna put it all together for, for everybody so we can put it on social media.
Okay, so you'll have that, so within, give or take a week? Or so, yeah, families, I get it.
Yeah.
So within 10 days or a week?
Within 10 days, we'll have it all.
You'll have, you'll have the entire schedule out on social media in case someone is looking for it.
Absolutely.
Right.
And we're, we're hope to have, um, printed schedule, and we're, our big plan is to have sandwich boards out at different places. That's our, that's our big plan. We don't know if we'll get there, but that's our plan. And also, I almost forgot, um, every year, we have a bake sale. I forgot about our bake sale, oh my God! Um, so we, every year, we have a bake sale, this is how we got it, Bake with Love, um, because we have wonderful bakers in Berry, um, and we always do, um, for charities. This year's, our charities are Free Mom Hugs and Pride Rides. Um, Pride Rides has a scholarship fund for folks that want to, um, buy a bike that can't afford it, all abilities, get out there and get on their bikes. And Free Mom Hugs is a wonderful 501(c)(3) that gets out to different events and just gives out hugs. How wonderful is that? Moms that take time away from their families and just gives out free hugs. Um, so those are our charities this year. So get out there and bake and bring all of your baked goods on June 7th to us, so that we can, and pay what you can. We accept everybody. That's what Pride's about, loving and accepting everybody.
Thank you. Yes?
Um, thank you for, for coming. Um, I, I know that you're still accepting sponsorship and donations, so I'd, I'd love to challenge counselors to, to donate to Berry Pride, to make this event a success. Email me on the side and tell me how much you donate, and we'll see if we can get a, an impressive amount that we'll brag about at a future meeting. Um, I think that could be really fun. I know we can't do it as counselors, so do it as individuals. I know that there's a, there's some fiscal sponsorship limitations there, but I would love if, if we can show our support for this event, uh, by doing that.
And donations are tax deductible, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, counsel, we are at item 8B on the agenda. This is to review the TIF Development Agreement. Uh, that was in your packet, quite a lengthy document. Thank you for taking the time to review it, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um,
Stephanie is joining us.
I'm gonna join, I'm gonna turn it right over to Stephanie and Carol.
Thank you so much, I need it.
Our point.
And folks, for those who are still standing, if you do want a seat, there's a couple of comfy ones here.
It's out in the hall, we're really comfy too, it's a little hot here. Um, all right, well, thank you so much for, uh, your attention on this matter, and it's nice to see all of you in person. I don't know that I've met all of you in person or seen you in person, really, in a long time, but I'm Stephanie Clark, I'm with White and Burke Real Estate Advisors, I am your consultant, I'm a consultant to the city on matters of TIF, which is Tax Increment Financing and Economic Development. And tonight, we're here to talk about the Stevens Branch Apartments' public-private partnership that the city has been pursuing for now, uh, over a year, well over a year. And I will try to keep these, um, this presentation short and sweet and leave it for some time for questions, but, um, this is not going to be the only time we're talking about this. So I just want to make it clear, this is our chance to, my chance to inform you. Um, but it's important to take the time to talk about this because it's been a project that the city has been pursuing and advan, and advancing and putting its energy behind for a while. So I'll cue you, Nicholas, I guess, to my next slide.
There we go.
Thank you, Anna. Um, I, tonight, really, our whole point is to, uh, I'll, I'll go through the objective of tonight, but also to talk about the timeline, the process, talk a little bit about what a public-private partnership is and what this one in particular looks like, what tax increment financing is, and then hit on the financing and the, um, development agreement for you so that you understand a little bit more about what's in your packet and talk about next steps. So tonight really is about understanding, there's not, we're not asking for a vote tonight, we're also not talking necessarily about the, um, the private development. It has gotten its DRB approval, so we're not going into depth on the private development itself, we're talking really about the, the arrangement and the infrastructure component. So I'm gonna give you an intro to the materials, you've had them in your packet, but you'll have more time to digest them. This is an open opportunity and try to educate you to tell your constituents about how they can learn more if needed. And so, again, we're not asking for action tonight. To bring you up to speed about where we are, um, in the next two weeks, we're hoping to come back and ask for approval of the, uh, Development Agreement and the financials, once you've had time to absorb them, and to submit our materials to the state. I will get into what VEPCE is, but it's the Vermont Economic Progress Council, and we need their approval to use the TIF tool. So we need to meet with them this summer in order to then ho, hold a citywide election on the bond, and after that is when the actual projects can commence, both the public side and the private side. And our intent is to break ground next spring and for the housing to open in the summer of 2027. of 2027. So, that's where we are. I didn't talk about where we've been, but most folks are aware of where we were. I was trying to keep this as brief as possible. So, the essence of a public-private partnership, I consider it four components. You've got the pub, the private side, what is the desired outcome? That's where I like to start because we're not here to talk about TIF. That's the means to an end. Like, what we really want to focus on is what we're trying to get, what is the value it's going to bring to the community? And then, we can talk about how we, the city, can be a partner in that and be supportive using infrastructure. And then, the, the two mechanics is the funding piece and the legal agreement piece. So, the, keeping our eye on the prize, 32 units of affordable housing. It's being called Stevens Branch Apartments. This is being done by Downstreet. As you'll recall, there was an LOI, an RFP that went out and an LOI that was pursued. So, you've got a partner here of Downstreet with Evernorth, and that has gone through the DRB approval process, so it's got its permits. And that's when, you know, they were at the table knowing they had infrastructure issues. So, the infrastructure issues, this is how a TIF deal is done. They identify what are those infrastructure issues that would make this project not pencil out for them. To have a project, as we all know, housing is incredibly difficult to develop right now, never mind in a dense downtown environment where there are existing constraints. So, the city gets involved. This is done all over the state, public-private partnerships in the communities where there are TIF districts. That's how this is achieved, is by having the city take away those infrastructure barriers. We've identified water and sewer extension, streetscape, paving, parking amendments that need to happen to the parking lot behind their project because the city is giving up its parking lot to make this project possible and to do some corrective action for the remediation of that prod, of that property. Those are the barriers. So, how do we finance it? TIF is tax increment financing. This is my one-minute spiel about a very complicated mechanism. When a municipality wants to get involved, it issues a bond, it constructs the infrastructure, it is a public asset, those are public infrastructure amenities. And then, the private sector builds its project, and the resulting tax increment, the new taxes generated by the development, pay down the municipal bond debt. And that's how a city is able to be a supporter and also own the public improvements that it's made. So, in this partnership, you've seen in your materials, there are two pretty dense pieces of work that are involved. One is the development agreement. That's a legal instrument that's required. It's not even statutorily required to use TIF. It is expected, and it's really the city's choice because the city wants to make sure it absolutely has a lock, in lockstep agreement. And what it does is really lays out the expectations of each party and what are those contingencies that allow folks to take off ramps before everybody puts in full risk. And by risk, I really mean putting in your debt and starting your project. But you make it so that you're in lockstep and they're ready to start at the time you're ready to start. And in that, we've identified a maximum of $2.6 million of TIF debt that we could incur to support their project. And the corollary in that is the financials, and that's that massive amount of tables that I have to present you with, and I apologize, they're very dense, but essentially, those are showing your borrowing capacity. Carol has worked tirelessly on this for over a decade. I helped set up the district, but in the meantime, I've come back and there's been a lot of other work done in the district. So, your district has the capacity to borrow money using the increment that's been generated since its inception. And this workbook you have shows how we borrow that money and how the cash will flow to pay down the debt on the possibly $2.6 million of debt. So, that's the long and short, very short of it, when it's a very long piece. And we can get more in-depth on that even at the next meeting, or if you have questions, we can field those at any time. And so, the ident, the idea is to, you know, answer your questions if there's any questions between now and your next meeting, but on June 3rd, to have another public, to have a public hearing. It's an actual public hearing that's been warned to allow folks to come out and ask questions or to hear from us. We might do a very similar presentation to this in a couple of weeks, short and sweet, but give people the basics. Because, again, this is going to a public vote in the fall, and we want everyone to know that they've had the opportunity to understand this in, you know, relative detail. And that will be the city council meeting. We ask for approval of these documents. And then, we hope to hit the July 31st meeting with VEPCE, and that will set us up to have the vote in the fall.
Ellen, if I may, just a couple of things. I know most everybody here, but Carol Dawes, I'm the Berry City TIF Administrator. And as Stephanie said, I have been for about 10 years or so. And the, the two things I wanted to point out is, as she mentioned, we're, we've warned a public hearing for two weeks from tonight, on June 3rd. Part of that warning was required to pu, publish it in the Times Argus, in today's paper. I would encourage people who want to look at sort of a bullet point summary of the, the project, that's a, that's a pretty clean way to read through what's, what's actually involved. So, I would encourage looking at that, particularly in advance of, of the public hearing on the 3rd. And the other thing I would say is that Stephanie and I worked together on that mass of spreadsheets that, that calculate our capacity for debt. And I would say that I can assure you that we were very conservative in our numbers. We ran all kinds of really negative scenarios to make sure that the numbers we were looking for are, are defensible. And so, I think we're really comfortable with the, with the $2.6 million cap, so...
Yeah, that's actually a really good point, and I meant to mention that when we go to VEPCE, it's get, it gets reviewed by an economist that works for the state agency, as well as the attorney looks at the development agreement. So, it goes through further review. So, we, we have to be super careful, as if we weren't already, because these also, all these districts get audited eventually and get, all of this gets looked at very carefully. So, we need to set ourselves up for success. We need to set up the city, future administrations up for success as well. And, you know, it goes without saying, in my mind, but it shouldn't, because tax increment financing, people hear tax and they get nervous. So, again, if you have constituents who don't understand TIF, please help them understand this does not affect their tax rate. This is how to build infrastructure without touching their taxes. It uses new increment that the, that wouldn't accrue otherwise.
And it grows the grand list, which is another thing that we keep talking about. We're very limited in how big we are. We're four square miles. We have very few opportunities to find ways to grow the grand list. And this is infill development, which is one of the, one of the terms you'll hear used, so...
Counselor, did you have a question?
No, I just, I read a little through it today. I'm trying to catch up, but was it like 4.6%? Was that an interest rate?
Yeah, 4 points, yeah.
Now, is that flexible? Does that stay consistent?
No, so that, that interest rate was as of the earlier this month, and so, per the bond bank, and that is very subject to change between now and...
Okay, that's kind of what I was...
Yeah, and that was based on certain terms that I specified, but the city, and specifically the city, you know, treasurer and, and the city manager will have a choice about how to structure that debt when it comes time.
Yeah, because, I mean, on long-term debt like that, you can have a structured interest rate that will last a certain period of time, even though it does go up, you'd still have that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, when you lock in with the bond bank, it's a fix.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And there are better interest rates available to municipalities through the bond bank.
Right. And open it, the future makes it go lower. Yeah, okay.
Yes?
How much flex is there in your preliminary scope and budget? I looked at the infrastructure improvements that are currently planned as part of the, part of this work, and I looked at the parking lot reconstruction, and we've been thinking and talking great deal about how to do parking lots better, with better stormwater drainage and better green infrastructure and things like that, which I presume would cost a little bit more. Is there time and scope to add some small pieces of that into this project?
I believe so. In ours, we added a, a pretty significant design contingency because we haven't pursued, we haven't advanced the design of that component very far. So, there is a design contingency intended because we don't know exactly what that will include. So, that design component should be, I don't know, the protocol of that getting communicated back to DPW, but as DPW works with the engineer on this project, that, you know, we'll, we'll pull that together. So, there is flexibility. There's also a huge contingency in there, by the way, for estimates, because this is where we are.
Yeah.
And I don't know how to predict what this will cost in the spring of '26. So, we just added some pretty significant contingencies. When you go to your voters, you're asking for an upper limit. You can't go, you can go back to the voters, but that's awkward. So, we just try to keep that as conservative as we can within, you know, a range of feasibility.
So, I just want to make sure I heard and understood you right, that, that you think that the existing contingencies would allow for adjustment of the parking lot to incorporate some green stormwater infrastructure, or I should do a little bit of research and come back to you with some numbers?
Yeah, I don't know how much those things will cost. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying we do have some design contingency because we did not, we don't know exactly what those improvements will consist of.
Understood.
So, I think there's a good opportunity here for that feedback to make sure it gets to the right place within the design team, and then we can...
Thank you very much.
Yeah, accommodate that, sure.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Yes?
Just quickly, what year would the tax increment fining, financing be paid off? About '47?
Wow, what a good test.
It was...
So, it...
I was trying to scroll real quick.
It was a very long...
Yeah, it's a 20-year debt instrument, so I think '47 sounds right.
Forty-seven.
Fiscal year, '47.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's right. It's a 20-year instrument if we incurred it next year. That being said, I just want to be clear, a district itself doesn't close until all debt is repaid. So, if there's further projects to happen...
Yeah.
After this one, for some, in some capacity, we just, we don't say that the TIF district is over until all TIF district debt is paid off.
Then, the city would see the resources...
Right, yes.
After that.
Correct, right.
And, and again, if you, if you look at the spreadsheets, there is a cash for the spreadsheet.
Yeah, I'm looking at them. I was looking at them earlier.
Yeah, and that shows you the out years because there is a balance in the increment fund that helps cover the debt service and the out years when we're no longer maintaining, we're no longer bankrolling increment, but we've got a fund back to cover it.
Right, but, yeah, to your point, yeah, we're no longer retaining after, yeah, well, actually, so we're not retaining after what year?
'39. We now got, currently, 39.
Thirty-nine. So, after '39, if you're, if I'm getting to your question, that increment will start going to the general fund.
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
Any other questions, folks?
I mean, mine are broad. We've got some meetings coming up, so that's fine. I thought Campbell was only included for construct, for easement purposes and not ownership.
Campbell is only included for easement. Campbell Place is...
Which one now?
The little square lot that had a house on it, bought and turned into a parking lot with...
I was mayor, I remember.
Yeah, so it, it, but Campbell itself is the, the parking lot next to it.
Right. Well, Campbell Place, I don't...
It's a long, narrow one.
No, I thought Campbell Place was included only for easement purposes.
It's part of the, that and the regular lot are, are the two construction, the two areas that will have the housing project. They were part of the original option.
And then, so you're going to, Exhibit B wasn't labeled in the agreement? So, if you could do that, just because, but you're going to, you're going to further refine that, so we'll have better numbers.
Yeah.
And then, lastly, Carol, you know me, it's got to pencil out.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's tax increment financing. So, if this particular project, I mean, if we were to amortize this debt over 40 years, the payments are $105,000 annually. So, it's got to generate $105,000 annually in property taxes, or guess what? We're going backwards.
Well, in this case, that's only partially true because, in this case, the actual fund itself, the TIF fund, because of the, the increment that's been accruing in the fund is at a certain level and will continue to generate money into the TIF fund. What this project itself generates is not, we don't need $100,000 a year to have it pencil out, and I'll show you.
But if we have $105,000 a year, this particular, I mean...
Yeah.
We've got private developer asking us to essentially invest $2.6 million in their project. It's TIF.
Yes.
That's increment, so...
And we assess their project, our, our future development pro forma of their assessed value should be 1.3 million.
1.3 total?
1.3 million of, of their value, yes.
Of value.
Well, because it's zero.
And it's virtually all increment.
Yeah, it's all increment.
It's virtually all increment because...
It's not taxable.
Because it's non-taxable property. There was a small amount of, of value on the Campbell Place lot, the camp, the house that we bought in the city lot, but it's, it's relatively small, 130, something like that.
Correct.
But essentially, the entire value of the project will be the increment.
So, we'll have, we'll have that projection. We'll have the revenue side, this project's revenue side in there as well?
Yeah, it is in there.
Okay, perfect.
It's in the model.
Awesome. Any other questions, folks?
The other thing that I would say that's tangential is, I've mentioned before to this body that we've got $437,000 that's due back to the TIF increment fund from the Ed Fund, from the State Ed Fund. That, that refund was added to the flood recovery bill today and has now gone to Senate Finance for finalization. And they are also supposed to be adding the extension into the same bill, once it gets to Senate Finance, so...
Perfect. Nice job.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, both of you.
Excellent, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the 3rd. Okay. Yeah, I went and lost my agenda. Okay, counsel, we are at item 8C on the agenda. This is first reading. We're a little late, that's okay. First reading warned for 7:00 PM. This is ordinance 2025-02, public conduct ordinance. Yes?
I wanted to ask about process.
Sure.
So, my question about this ordinance is that, based on the comment that was made at our last meeting, that the, the ordinance was reviewed by an attorney but paid for by the mayor. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And which attorney? Was it the city attorney or an outside attorney?
No, it was the city attorney.
So, I just want to understand how this passes the city council policy on legal services? So, could that be explained to me?
Yeah, the, I can explain that the mayor asked my, asked me if, if he could engage with the city attorney and at his expense. And I consulted with the city, you know, I, this, I asked the city attorney if there's any conflict with, with, with that occurring, and he was, he said that then there wasn't. It was clear that the city was the client during that review. So, yeah, the mayor consulted with me. He asked my permission to speak with the city attorney. I also thought there was value of this was going to proceed, that it would be the city attorney that be, that has the eyes on it so that we're not going leapfrogging from city attorney to a private attorney, back to city attorney. So, that was considered when the mayor made the request.
So, would you say that the mayor was acting as an individual or that this was a city-approved?
I'll answer that question. No, we discussed that with Attorney Rue. I made it very clear who his client is. The client, his client is the city of Berry, and I would simply be reimbursing the city for the legal, for the cost of the legal review. That is also something that I brought up to this counsel while you were here, no less than three times in council meetings. Talked about the ordinance, what was happening with it, how it would be brought back before the council, and here it is.
It, it feels like it's a loophole to this policy.
Well, I'm a, I'm a tax accountant, so...
It feels like sometimes there are, that the policy is in place to, that, you know, some people have to follow rules and other people don't. So, it's just, I, I don't, I, it feels to me that when someone as an individual is paying for something, that they are acting as an individual, and that if the city is paying for it, then that's on behalf of the city. So, it seems to me that either we should change the policy and table the first reading of the ordinance, or we should just accept the fact that some people have different rules.
You can change the policy if you want.
Well, we can't do it right now because we haven't warned it.
Correct.
So...
I'd make a motion that we table the first reading of the, of the ordinance.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Moved it seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. Okay. So, counsel, Nicholas, if you don't mind, why don't you go through just sort of a history of the ordinance presented to the council, how it was developed, why it was developed? I don't know if, is Chief Fails still here?
Chief's here, yeah.
I don't know if he, do you want to come up for this?
You could come up for, to the hot seat, yeah. Yeah, so we, we've briefed the council several times about our, our police statistics. Started last year in the fall when we started observing and noticing, and I think probably just everyone across the board hearing from their constituents about upticks in, in quality of life nuisance issues around the city. I think the first briefing was sometime in September, October of last year, where we showed you the data, that it's not a mirage, it's, it's, the, the numbers are real. There's, there has been an uptick in quality of life nuisance crimes, and the chief can give you, we've gone through the, the names of the crimes, the chief can, can go over them in detail.
detail. We noticed not just an increase, but also a, so clusters of where these things were happening, and the police department data was backing that up. It wasn't anecdotal, it wasn't perception, it was, it was data-based. This is an issue that, it's not Berry that's facing, I want to be very clear when we talk about this topic, it's not, this is not specific to Berry. Many communities throughout the state have been grappling with this, and in fact, this ordinance that we're talking about today is an ordinance that the Town Board of Brattleboro enacted. And so we, we looked at what they were doing, and, you know, they were facing similar issues. If you go back and look at the press about when they considered this, if you look back to the town council meetings in Brattleboro when they were debating this, they're talking about a lot of the same things that we face, that the police department faces on a regular basis. And so we started looking at this as, as a tool that could work in Berry as well. We had a public safety forum, I believe it was in December of last year.
January?
December, January. And that was an opportunity for members of the council, myself and the chief, the state's attorney, Donnelly, was there with us as well, she's here today, to hear from members of the public about, not just, not only about the issue and their experiences with the quality of life crimes that were occurring, but also to get feedback on an ordinance such as, such as this being enacted in Berry. So that was the, sort of the first time we talked through an ordinance like this. It didn't proceed any further. We're back with it today. It's had some additional review. It probably still needs some work, I'd be the first one to acknowledge that. This ordinance was subsequently overturned by, I believe, a representative town meeting in Brattleboro, but it was enacted by their, by their select board, I don't know what, I think they have a select board, but it was enacted by their select board largely in the form that you have in front of you today. So in broad strokes, what this ordinance does is it, it sort of, it creates some boundaries on behavior. There's behaviors that we're observing that, that are reflected in the ordinance here. It creates some locations where these behaviors would be enforced, and there's sort of three categories. There's zones that are identified because of their, you know, where children or vulnerable populations congregate. There's zones that are designated because they're areas where people handle money, and there's areas where, that are designated because it's places of public gatherings, for lack of a better term. It creates three classes of prohibited behaviors. Class A is the highest, most serious, down to class C, which are, which are the least serious, and then some penalties associated with the class A to class C behaviors. And then there's also a section on nuisance properties, which is areas where there's been repeated police calls or zoning, fire marshal calls to the same properties for, in the course of a 12-month period. So that would, you know, to create incentives for landlords to also, you know, have a grasp of the activities happening in their properties as well. So this is, I believe, a tool for our police department. I want to be very clear upfront, neither the chief nor I believe that this is an ordinance to make the city money, like this is not about the fines that are included in the ordinance. This is a tool for our police officers on patrol, when they're observing these quality of life nuisance issues that are occurring in our public spaces, that are shared public spaces. It's a tool, it gives them the legal backing to go ask people to not do those things that are identified in this ordinance. And again, this is taking almost word for word what Brattleboro enacted, and we think that it may have value for our officers here in Berry as well.
Thank you. Chief, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what the manager had said and reiterate that, you know, we're not looking to fine people and make money off of this. There's some specific language in here that will allow us, another tool, that, you know, if they don't stop their behaviors, that we have the ability to issue them trespass notices for some of these sensitive areas, at which time, if they continue and they continue to trespass, then it does become a criminal violation. But again, the officers have discretion, they're very good about utilizing that discretion, and it's not designed to make money, it's just to have a tool for some of the behaviors that don't necessarily rise to the criminal level, to be able to enforce that and try to have folks, you know, act within proper conduct so everybody can enjoy the city.
Thank you. Counsel, questions? No?
I have a lot of questions.
Then go ahead.
My first concern is with the very, very vague language that's very subjective or undefined, things like reasonable. Who determines what's reasonably behavior? Things like intimidating. What the police chief might find intimidating and what I find intimidating are probably two very different things. Harassing language is also, I think, somewhat subjective. So I'm wondering, how are those things going to be defined, and who gets to decide what the definition is? My second question is about trespass powers. This seems like a very big First Amendment violation. My third question and concern is regarding the appeals and waivers. I am concerned that it's going not to a neutral third party, but going to the city manager, and not that I don't trust the city manager, but I think, first of all, we didn't hire the city manager to hear appeals and grant waivers in this kind of capacity. And then another question I have is about who, when it says, it talks about city officials, who are these people? Is it just police officers, or are we going to deputize other people? Will they have de-escalation training? What is the accountability for them? And my final question is about nuisance properties. That seems unrelated in the fact that this chapter ordinance is called Conduct in Parks and Public Spaces, and I'm not sure how private properties, nuisance properties would be included in the ordinance. Those are my first questions.
Did you get all that, Chief? Because you never, Counsel Spaulding never paused and allowed you the courtesy of answering the questions, so...
I could go through one by one, if you'd like me to go through one by one.
If you could, please.
So the first one is, who will determine what, because the language is very subjective, who determines what's reasonable? Who determines what's intimidating, and who determines what's harassing?
The majority of these things would come from complaints of citizens, which would allow us a tool to utilize, again, if we get a complaint. So it's not necessarily what I would feel intimidating. I don't get intimidated by such behavior. I've been doing this for 35 years now, so I've, I've seen a lot, so it takes a lot to intimidate me. But if you have somebody, for instance, that is trying to utilize this ATM, and they're being intimidated, or they claim to be intimidated, that would be a reasonable element that I would think that would fit intimidation.
Could you see how this might be used against somebody just not, not actually in a really, you know, someone maybe not being intimidating? Like, I could call and say, hey, that guy over there is being really intimidating, you need to come and do something about this, even though it's just that I don't like him.
To be fair, any, anything can be utilized in that manner, whether it's a law or not. And I've seen that before. But that doesn't necessarily mean that people are going to target a certain individual or certain individuals or a group of individuals just because it's an ordinance.
Well, you could see how some people might be concerned about that.
I understand the concern.
Okay. How about reasonable? How do we determine what's reasonably behavior, or reasonable language, or reasonable sound, boisterous? Like, who determines that? I have a lot more tolerance for that because I have kids, whereas someone else, like, you know, maybe a older lady who's, like, you know, likes things nice and quiet, she doesn't have as much tolerance. So who determines what's reasonable?
I don't think it's specifically talking about the reasonable sound. I think it's talking about the behavior associated with the verbiage that is being utilized against individuals. For instance, what has been classified as aggressive panhandling. There have been individuals that are upset about how they're being spoken to when they're, when they tell the individuals no. That would be reasonable, in my opinion, if they made a complaint, that we would have the ability to take action.
And would it be in these instances where you're, you're just having, you know, one person complaining about another person, it's, you know, one person's recollection of the incident versus another? Yes, or wouldn't that be true?
Can you repeat that again?
Well, it's just going to be a he said, she said kind of thing, because unless there's other people there...
Unless it's, correct, unless it's witnessed, everything is he said, she said in our line of work.
I'm concerned that there's going to be, we're going to be criminalizing people who have nowhere to go, have no money, have very few resources.
To be fair, we're not trying to criminalize homelessness or socioeconomic status. We're trying to combat the conduct that is being displayed in public, that all the citizens, 8,500 citizens, should be free from to enjoy the city.
So, okay, I'll move on to my other questions. What about the trespass powers and First Amendment violations? If you, if you say you're not allowed to be in these areas anymore, isn't that a violation of someone's First Amendment rights?
I don't believe so. To be clear, we have people that are actually not allowed to be in Berry City by virtue of conditions of release.
Okay.
And, and we've dealt with those individuals on a criminal scale.
But would you consider these people criminal because they're aggressively panhandling?
If they are trespassed because their conduct doesn't change and they are invited into court...
So they've become criminals because they have no money?
No, it's because of their behavior, not because they don't have any money.
Okay. How about appeals and waivers? And maybe I should direct this to the city manager.
I can address that. It's, first of all, it says it can be designated, so it doesn't necessarily have to be me. And so that's, that's point number one, and I think this is important enough for, you know, for it to be part of my job. I genuinely do. And if we, if there's a proposal to designate somebody else, I welcome that as well. But I think it's, it's an important part of the concerns that we're hearing, and I would, I think it's part of my job, and I'll do it.
Would you consider, though, that it's a bit unusual to have you, as a city manager, determining who can appeal to you, and you get to determine on some arbitrary scale about who gets to be granted an appeal and who doesn't?
No, because I make decisions like that all the time in relation to labor agreements with the city, employment with the city, terminations or hirings with the city. The city manager, you, you, you as the council hire me a city manager to make decisions like that every day.
But these kinds of things, we usually count on the courts to make decisions, not just an arbitrary third party. Okay, so my last few questions regarding, in here, it talks about a city official, so it doesn't talk about just police officers, it talks about a city official.
It would be police officers.
It's only police officers.
Then it should say that.
Yeah, that's very unclear. And could I ask why nuisance properties is also included in a ordinance that is about conduct in parks and public spaces?
This is, this is also something that was taken from the Brattleboro ordinance, which is also, when we reviewed the whole ordinance, is an issue that we confront here in Berry City. Can very easily be addressed by adding a new chapter, putting that section in a new chapter if there's a concern about the titling. But we, you know, I think we're in a, when we look at what other communities are doing and we see if it applies to Berry City, we'll, we'll take all of it. And this was something that, when we looked at it with the chief and the rest of the department heads, it's also applicable to us, we're facing similar issues, and so we thought it was something that could help us as well.
So I have, I just have just absolutely major concerns that this is going to open us up to all kinds of liability. I don't think it's going to fix anything. I could be hopeful that it would, but I also feel like our police department is stretched thin as it is. If they have the ability to come out and tell people to give tickets, to say that you're not allowed to trespass, why aren't they already out there now? That's my question. If we're, if, I don't understand why we need this, to tell people that they're doing things that are already illegal. There are lists of things in here that are already illegal. You're not allowed to do illegal drugs. You're not allowed to be lewd, have, you know, lewd conduct. You know, these things are already illegal. Why are we not already giving them tickets?
There are certain things in here that are illegal, yes. There are other things that are not illegal that this doesn't address. So not all the things in here, excuse me, that you see in this list have, they don't necessarily fit criminal elements of crimes.
And Chief, if I could add, I think another element that's different to this is the radiuses, the radii around certain issues, so the sensitive zones being designated, I believe, is also an add and gives some enforcement authority to the department.
And the, the police department responds to complaints. We also try to do as much proactivity as we can. So this would, just, again, it would allow us, when we get these complaints, to have another tool to utilize, instead of just saying, I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do.
Well, I completely disagree with that. I don't think it's going to fix anything, but...
Thank you. Yes?
I have a lot of trouble with this also, partly because I can see arguments that it will be unevenly applied, and that, you know, and that so much of the ordinance is based on who's complaining. And I think our marginalized neighbors are, would get less attention if they complained. I mean, would, say, in a case of aggressive panhandling, somebody asks, let's, you know, say, okay, so here's, here's one way that that can go. Somebody comes up to you and says, I need money to Danville because, and you say, I can't help you, I'm real sorry, and they move on. You can also say, why can't you get a job, you dirty filthy person? And then it escalates. I mean, this inevitably escalates. But if the person who complains is the one who started the escalation, but they're the person who's feeling threatened, I have concerns about this being unevenly applied, and also being, because of that, being challenged in court. And then there's the question of, you know, the city will be on the hook for defending their ordinance. And I'm just worried about that. And I find that same issue with the definite, you know, when you're, if you're able to define a nuisance property because somebody calls the police on you four times in a year, it doesn't actually say that the police have to find something that was, that really is wrong there. So I can, I can envision a situation where somebody's mad at their former employee, you know, who, the business owner who owns a bar where they got fired, and so this person calls the police several times about this bar for, you know, drunken disorderly conduct of the bar's patrons, and, you know, it just seems like there, there may be other ways to address this, which don't criminalize people or set up that kind of dynamic.
Yes.
Just want to say I'm slightly disappointed in how we're kind of conveying our police officers, that we're going to kind of think that they're going to appease a certain group of people. They're here to enforce what's going on regardless of any socio-economical issues, that if somebody is doing drugs in the park, regardless of whether they're homeless or have a home or any of that, they're going to enforce it, that their job is to enforce the laws or the ordinances that we can give equally. And in a community where we do have many that are disadvantaged, that our officers are dealing with these individuals on a daily basis and know what they shouldn't, shouldn't be looking for, and do investigations constantly. So for them not to do their due diligence and for us to question what they are, aren't doing, I mean, I think it's important to question things, but if we see a pattern where our officers aren't doing things by the book and straight and narrow, then that's when we question them. We're giving our police officers a tool that they can use, that Brattleboro, back in their town meeting day, just this year, revisited this, had voted to go with it with their select board. I appreciate everything that we're doing, and I will absolutely support this.
Yes.
To add to what Michael said, you know, in all these situations, there's going to be hypotheticals. You know, what if they did that and do that? Okay, so out of 100, there's two hypotheticals. How about the 98% that was done properly? And like Mike said, they're, they're officers of the law. That's what they're hired to do. What this does is give some kind of consequence. I mean, maybe some of it should be harsher, you know, incarceration, but at this point, I think to at least take this first step and not worry about all these, you know, I could make up anything, you know, well, you go to the bathroom, you could fall, you could slip, you could, I mean, of course. But I think it's been written out, you know, and again, it could be, you know, tweaked a little bit here and there, but it's a start, you know, from, I can imagine a police officer, the same person, the same thing, over and over, and I know there's no consequences. Sometimes you've got to have consequences for your actions. That's the way it is. That's all I have to say.
Chief?
Thank you. Yes?
Are there consequences for things like public drunkenness and drug use in public spaces already? Aren't, aren't those items illegal now?
It all depends. For instance, it is illegal for drugs, but when you have individuals that you don't have the drugs on, on them, and they're under the influence, but they're not incapacitated, and their behavior is based on that drug activity, there's not much of a consequence there. And we do the best we can to steer people towards the resources if they don't want them. For instance, we work collaboratively with Turning Point. You can't be under the influence and, like, get services from Turning Point, you have to wait until they're not under the influence, and that's, that's very hard when you're addicted. So that's not a resource for them. And when their behaviors are because of that issue, there has to be some sort of accountability there. And at times, when you do get individuals into court, that is when they get the resources that they need. They can be ordered into, you know, for instance, drug treatment court, or there, there can be stipulations that they have to go to Valley Vista or other places. And there's individuals that sometimes need that. I don't want to say hit rock bottom, but a lot of the times they do, and that's, that's when they get the help. And this is a tool to facilitate that. And this is a tool to facilitate that at some point.
Okay. Connie Godin? You on Zoom? Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Hello, we can, thank you.
I'm, I'm confused. Is Brattleboro, is that enacted or repealed at this present time?
Brattlebrows was enacted by the select board and then it was subsequently repealed on a representative town meeting vote.
So right now it's repealed?
It's not in effect in Brattleboro, no.
Okay. And I, these people cannot pay fines. You fine them, they cannot pay fines. And those fines go with them for years. Any little tiny money they get in the future, the state will get. It makes me very sad. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
Mr. Mayor, can I just suggest, please, that we talk to the people that have been sitting here all night and some of the people that are sitting home watching this?
Yeah, I'm going to recognize, I'm going to recognize Counselor Dearing first.
The March 3 ballot, the Brattleboro did bring it back to their voters and they did approve it for their count, their select board to look at. So they are revisiting that actively. Absolutely. It is not passed, but they have.
Please, please wait to be recognized.
But they are revisiting that as a community.
Ma'am, you had your, in, in the green chair, you had your hand quite a while, quite a while ago, if you want to, if you want to come up to the microphone.
Yes.
You, you do or people can't hear your question?
Yes, my name is Mary Pyfield. I am a Berry City resident and I also work at the Berry City Elementary and Middle School. So our schools are the heart of our community and I really value that. One thought, one scenario that occurred as discussion of, you know, like, public conduct, that it's quite vague, there are no specific scenarios necessarily. So one thing that occurred to me when the point of aggressive panhandling occurs and then it was pointed out that as adults, we can, as individuals, we can communicate and say, you know, I can't help you now. And, you know, if the person moves on, then that's, you've sort of solved it vis a vis, just interpersonal communication. So then there's also the public fundraising that some cities, including Berry City, engages in, where people stand in the streets and, you know, you have to stop your car. And then there is, you know, an appeal for you to donate, you know, in the coin drop. And so there's an element of your own voluntary interaction with that public stopping of your vehicle. You can't run people over. And so, you know, your, your normal reasonable conduct is that you stop and, but so some people might view this as invasive or coercive or perhaps not intimidating, but it is a public appeal with a seal of public approval that this is okay in this way to make, you know, appeals for money from the public. So to me, you know, the person who is homeless and they are hungry, perhaps they have a substance abuse issue, perhaps they have a mental health issue and they are in the process of trying to achieve a recovery, but they haven't arrived at that point. And perhaps we do not have accessible mental health, mental health organizations. I applaud all of the good work of the public agencies that are engaged in public service on behalf of all of us. And so again, I think that sometimes with timelines, it's very difficult to strike a balance between meaningful mental health or disability issues or substance abuse issues or social emotional issues. And so I think that a compassionate approach, a respectful approach, not condescending approach is the feeling respectful way that we can interact and not criminalizing when someone is having a mental health or a, a physical issue, that they're not in full control. And that is also reflected in legal opinions about whether someone is in their right mind when they might be having a substance abuse issue or a mental health or an emotional issue. And those sorts of things are not things that people turn on a dime and turn off and on. And it is a process and it's crossed a really variable spectrum. So I guess that thought occurred to me and I don't want to take up too much time, but so thank you. And I hope that the public conduct ordinance can be more fully fleshed out. And perhaps there are other specific scenarios that occur to others. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McSheffery?
Sorry to feel like a grandstander around here, but welcome to the new counselors and thanks for, for taking the time to listen. And I agree, I'd like to turn around and say, working with Sean at Pride, like we have for many years at Cornerstone, and, and supported the community, the homeless, the, the people that are on drugs and, and anything and everything else that, that is, is meaningful, not just to me, but to everyone in this room, not just to the left or the right or otherwise. I just want to give you just a quick paraphrasing and, and if it's two minutes, I'm really going to be racing here, is, I've been here now for 15 years on that corner across the street and, and down the street at the building where our, where Two Loco is located, not to mention in and out of every building. My wife is a teacher at Berry City as well. And I, I've progressively watched this get, get worse, not, not in a hurry, but slowly, because I probably spend more time over the last 15 years on Main Street than I do at my own house. And I'm driving down here tonight and I'm watching my neighbors on their zero turns and thinking to myself, you know, I grew up as a city boy where, you know, my parents didn't have anything and I watched them, you know, grow enough to be settled down someday and, and that was my hope. But I, I have never ever come out to the city or, or been on my Facebook to do anything but try to have fun, to promote my businesses, if that's the case. But if anything ever happens, I'm the first one, I can't help it. This morning, a little, the concession stand got broken into, they stole all, all these goods out of there. I just like, tell me what was on the list, I'll, I'll, I'll have it there tomorrow. It's taking care of the little things and the big issues. The, the thing that gets me is that I have, I'm sitting or standing at Cornerstone today looking across at the library. There was eight people in the library, two bikes, two people changing, everyone smoking. I knew four of them that either, either worked with me before, worked at my restaurant, that I played softball with, that worked for UPS six years ago, people, good people, like, these, these are people from our community that lost their way. And I know some of them specifically, they lost, not only they lose their way, they lost their kids. My, my wife taught them in kindergarten. This is not, this is not a grandstanding political issue. It, it's an issue of public safety. And the reason I say public safety is because these, these people, if they were in your front yard, which they're in my front yard, Cornerstone's my front yard, not only is it my front yard for 15 years, but the 60 employees that I've had have paid for their front yards, whether it be in Berry City or Berrytown, but locally, by working at, at our places. And, and what's confusing to me is, is that, that people don't, don't just see it. And I know why you don't, because you're just passing by or you just, you hear somebody say something that makes sense to you and, and you want to support it. I'm sitting in the back of the room, I'm listening to Sony, I've known you my whole life, you know, and, you know, these, these people are like, yes, you know, like this is, no, what we need to do, we know it's a drug problem. It's not a, it's not a panhandling problem. I'm like the chief, like, I'm not worried about my corner. They don't bother me on my corner because I know half of them, I was told them to leave. But I'm telling you, if they're at your business every day, which why not? I could get them to go over there, I'll give them 50 bucks and they'll go spend all week long at your business doing their stuff. If they're on your front yard in public property, you know, going to the bathroom on your mailbox and, and, and smoking crack while you're trying to get in and out with your kids, eventually you're going to be intimidated. It's not everyone, it's not, it's, it's not everyone and they're not all scary, but when you're on drugs, forget mental, if you're on drugs, that fentanyl and heroin, you're not in control of what you're doing, you're, you're, you're making poor decisions to begin with. I don't want one of those poor decisions to be made on one of your kids, my, my kids certainly, my family or anything else. So I'm asking, instead of coming in here and talk, people talking about how, how we don't like what's, what's being presented as, as a, 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 a thing to try to slow it down or stop it or prevent it or move it along a little bit, where's your solution? Where is it? Where's it, where's the solution from all of the other people? I guarantee it and it's not even close. I, I recognize a bunch of people in this room, but I also don't recognize a bunch. I've lived here just as long, I've worked here just as long, and I have spent way, way, way more time, money, resources and effort taking care of the homeless people, the drug people, the youth of this community than almost anyone in this community. So I apologize for getting upset about this. I'm, I will, I, I called, I literally emailed my landlord yesterday asking how long my lease was because I'm ready to go. I'm ready. I feel like I'm losing the fight because it's just like, people aren't, people aren't grasping the problem and just trying to fix it. It's all about like trying to fight against one, one another. This is a community, this isn't the, the country, this is one little community of 8,000 plus people that we have all the resources, we, we have the Pride Parade, we have all this, all the stuff going on here, Heritage Fest, there's some well-run events. Downtown is unquestionably being affected by what's going on downtown. How to deal with it? I don't even know how to deal with it. I know how I dealt with it on my corner, but that, that's just one corner, that's just one spot. And I feel unfair almost for pushing them across the street. But to watch two ladies walk from, from the, the old Berry Housing Manor towards the library today, getting ready to go to the library and talking to each other for a second and turning around and going back up the street because they didn't want to walk up the front stairs of our library because of what was going on. And I have pictures, I hear you chirping, but I have pictures of, of this from today, from today. What, you guys bringing your family to the park to have, have a picnic across the street? Are you kidding me? I took pictures tonight, tonight, of like six people with blankets in the park. You can go to Good Samaritan, there are resources for homeless, there are resources for drug users. One of the rules is, requirements is, even of the Good Samaritan, which I've done a ton of work with, currently employ one of their people, is you can't be intoxicated, you can't be on drugs to stay there. Why is it okay for them to stay at the gazebo? That's what I don't understand. I'm not going to waste any more of your time. I, I apologize, I came in here to really listen, I wasn't even planning on getting this involved in it, but watching the, the room, I just, I just think it's funny to think that if all the stuff that was happening in my front yard, right there, was happening in your front yard and your, where you live, where, where you, where you make your income or do whatever to take care of this community, you wouldn't be having it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ginger Cloud? I'll get you a second chair. Hi. Ginger? You there?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I just heard you say to pause. Thanks so much for engaging in this important discussion. I really appreciate everyone's thoughtfulness. And some of the questions I have are around the impact on policing and how this will stress our, our police officers and as well as questions about our youths. I used to be a drug and alcohol counselor for adolescents and I can tell you, a lot of these ordinances that are being proposed around, that are very subjective, are, are things that are used to in our development entirely appropriate. So I'm really concerned about criminalizing youth behavior and the impact that will have on their ability to access a library or access our parks or, or different events or camps or things like that, that we're potentially going to be prohibiting them from accessing. There's no age limits or definitions on how this ordinance will be applied at this point. But as far as policing, what's the expected increase in police workload and what data supports the expansion of these duties on our police force that's already, I mean, they were just here, was it last week or two weeks ago or two sessions ago, talking about how, you know, recruitment, retainment, fund, like having enough people to work, overtime already being an issue and the budget restriction? So I guess that's my first question.
So to answer that question, we're already dealing with these issues now, but there's no accountability. So it's, it's not really going to increase the workload, it'll just, it'll give us an avenue for accountability. It may add like the actual writing of a ticket or a trespass notice, but it's, it's not a major increase in the workload because we're ordering, already handling these issues. But we just, we, we have no accountability for, for the actions of some of these behaviors that are described here in this ordinance.
Gotcha. And so I'm just thinking about how we can't discriminate, right? We can't just target certain people for these ordinances. So we're looking at potential mass increase of people. I mean, if some, if there's kids, again, like being too loud, what some people might consider too loud or leaving a backpack behind, we even, this even includes smoking, right, or vaping. I mean, this, these are things I see all the time walking down the street. So I'm just wondering, like, how our police force, I think it would take a lot, a lot of additional time, but I'm hearing you say you don't think it would. Also, I'm wondering what resources, as far as personnel training, funding are being added to your budget to prevent mission drift from the core public safety function that this is supposedly gonna help, help you guys with?
Okay, so, so two things I want to point out. Number one is we have a state mandated fair and impartial policing policy that we have to treat everybody equally. So we're not, we're not going to use it to discriminate against any, any one individual or group of individuals. The officers also have discretion and they utilize that discretion appropriately when dealing with people. I know it was discussed a little bit earlier about, you know, targeting somebody in a he said, she said manner, but the officers are exceptional at getting at the bottom of an incident when they're at the incident to determine what's really going on. And I apologize, I missed your, your second part of it.
Well, I'm just wondering about funding, training to, to help prevent mission drift. So is this not expanding to other things? And just, do you have data that supports this non-biased policing? Because I've only seen things come out where Vermont specifically has a lot of bias in policing. And so is there data outside of just the, the idea that we do this?
We, we have a, we have a policy, like I said, that's state mandated. As far as data on, on bias, you know, I, I don't specifically have that data at my fingertips.
Okay, yeah. I've seen some recently, but yeah, the state does release it regularly.
Well, that, that's, that's on a, that's on a different level. Their, their bias that they talk about, they've done several studies on, on traffic, race data specifically. This is a different thing here that we're talking about though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, yep. And then what happens if officers are asked to enforce civil conduct laws that they were not trained to interpret or apply fairly?
This all blends into their, what they're already trained to do. These ordinances were, we receive training on upholding the constitution as well as enforcing the laws and ordinances of any community. So that is all part of their training. I would also like to add that we have included funding in our training budget annually, it increases annually, and we've incorporated several things like CIT training, which I'm mandating everybody, including my dispatch staff, to go through. They've been slowly getting through that because they don't offer it so many, but so many times. And that's crisis intervention training. We have a lot of mental health training, so we're Um, so we're, we're consistently, um, invested in training to, to fit the community needs and the statewide needs, um, as it develops.
Okay. Um, and then I guess I know, I know we have other people. So I just, one last question to just sit with is how might the city be introducing additional adverse childhood events through these ordinance on our youth as they become ticketed for vaping or smoking or, uh, potential beverage use, which they would, some of these anyways, right? Because they're not legally, but.
Correct.
Increased enforcement, um, that will increase. Or someone thinking that they're being too loud or they leave a backpack behind or they leave belongings behind, um, they forget their backpack. So there's all these, these things that are so ambiguous in here that I'm, I'm concerned about how this will impact.
I, I don't think the, the specific, um, notion of a, a child leaving a backpack behind, we're not going to go out and give that child a ticket for that.
Talking about teenagers, more teenagers than a child.
This, this is designed to, um, address other specific behaviors, not necessarily the juvenile behavior of a juvenile leaving a backpack behind or smoking. There's already, there's already avenues that we deal with that. Um, and it, it's, it's not through enforcement and tickets.
Right. Because there's not an avenue, but as soon as there is an avenue, that becomes a potential.
We're not, we're not.
Wait, um, you said my last question?
Yep, that was it.
Question ago. I gotta hold you to that.
I was just reflecting.
But I can, I can circle back around. Counselor, did you have a quick question?
I mean, I'm just a little concerned about the adverse childhood experiences of my own children when we're sitting on Main Street trying to watch a Christmas parade drive by and you have Brandon Carbo pounding on my window begging for money and you tell him, I'm sorry, I have no money and just continues to harass people and we can't get something.
Counselor, I'd appreciate it if you wouldn't make things personal.
Sorry, sir.
Yep. No worries. Uh, sure.
Jeremy Spirewin, uh, Berry City resident. I come bearing many questions today. Uh, the first is, uh, can anybody describe a specific situation in which this ordinance would apply that existing laws and ordinances do not?
I can give you one prime example that just recently happened. We had an individual in Dante Park that was urinating in the park. Um, he had his back, um, to the public, but he, he was still urinating in the park.
Public urination is legal now?
There's, there's no, there's no statute that this fits into.
Okay, so it's legal right now?
Yes. And that's, that's your example that you want?
All right. Um, has anybody mapped out an area of Berry City that this would cover? Has anyone looked at how much of Berry City would, this would apply to?
No, we haven't yet.
No.
It's because it's not an ordinance yet, yes.
Right. So I did a little bit of loose looking into this. And one of the things that it mentions is 50 feet with any parking meter, right? There's a lot of parking meters in Berry City. So if you start drawing circles on the map, essentially what we're looking at is that this applies to virtually all of downtown Berry City. So the question is, is the intention for this to apply virtue, for at virtually all of downtown?
The intention is what's written in the draft ordinance.
So, so, okay. So to be clear, the intention is that these prohibitions on behavior are intended to apply virtue, for virtually all of.
So the meters are captured because that's an area where people handle money. And so the, because they handle money at, at potentially any meter.
Yeah.
That's why every meter is captured. That's correct.
So then the intention here, and correct me if I'm wrong, would be to ban smoking per, uh, section 25, five subsection B4, ban vaping per that same subsection, ban swearing per subsection B7A. Uh, it would ban leaving a bicycle outside of a store and then going in to shop in virtually all of downtown. So is that the intention of this ordinance?
That's the way it's written, yes. And I think that, I, I think, let me answer the question. Yeah, let me answer the question. So I think that, um, perhaps, and maybe the chief can address this a little bit more. Um, there's a lot of discretion in how law enforcement officers enforce the law. Because the way we know that is because not everybody goes 65 on I-89 and not everyone's getting a ticket when they're going over 65. So law enforcement officers are trained, they go to an academy, uh, they're trained to use their judgment and their best judgment to enforce the laws that we have. Um, so that's, there's a lot of things in here that address behaviors that may become problematic. And the purpose of this ordinance, as we've stated again and again, is to give our police officers the tools to address those most problematic situations. Every part of this ordinance can be taken to its most basic level and not be a violation that wouldn't, A, bother, an officer would not respond to, or that somebody might not report to the police. But every situation in this ordinance also, at its maximum extreme, could become a situation where a law enforcement officer, using the judgment they're trained to do, use at the academy, would respond to and ma, then make a judgment at that location if a ticket or other action is warranted.
But to clarify, I would be in violation of this ordinance if I were to vape within 50 feet of a parking meter.
Technically you would be, just like if you go 26 miles an hour down Main Street, you would also be in violation of ordinance.
But there's a lot of, there's a lot of normal behaviors that would suddenly be, that, that would suddenly be a violation, subject to a fine, subject to trespassing in all of, all of downtown Berry City. And the intention is to make those behaviors subject to criminal citation.
The intention, again, I feel like I have to repeat myself one more time, is these situations and these ordinances taken to extremes can become situations where a law enforcement officer using their best judgment that they're trained to use at the police academy would respond to.
Right. So would have the capacity to respond to because somebody would be in violation of these ordinances. So effectively, we're saying, up to, subject to the judgment of police, like anything else, you're not allowed to smoke downtown, you're not allowed to vape downtown, you're not allowed to leave a bicycle unattended downtown, you're not allowed to appear angry, you're not allowed to do all sorts of different behaviors. And yes, police will apply their judgment. I'm sure it will not be applied to every single person, but that is an incredibly broad authority to essentially criminalize normal behaviors and then decide who you want that to apply to on a basis that we have no control over. And that's extraordinarily concerning. That's like extraordinarily concerning to basically say, people can't do normal stuff unless the police permit them to do that using whatever judgment they prefer to apply. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah.
Should I go? Oh, I'll do one more in person. Yes. Get your hand up.
Danielle Zarsky, Berry City resident. Um, I too am not easily intimidated. Um, so thank you for the opportunity to speak. I prepared these words because I want to make the most of my time. Um, so let's call it what it is. It's performative responsibility to visibility, not crime. This ordinance tries to criminalize behavior that's already illegal. So why duplicate laws that already exist, as others have been saying? Loitering, public drug use, indecent exposure, these are already covered. What this adds is a pathway to jail via fines that people living in poverty can't pay. It punishes economic status under the guise of public safety. If you have a home, a shower and a bank account, this ordinance doesn't affect you. But if you don't, it targets you simply for existing in public space. That's not justice. It's selective enforcement based on visibility and circumstance. The language in the proposal, as others have said, is also deeply vague. Terms like unreasonably disturbing or obstructing leave too much to open to interpretation. This creates confusing for, confusion for both citizens and law enforcement, and it puts us all in a legal gray zone. We should be refining rights, not eroding them. Meanwhile, this doesn't address harm happening behind closed doors. Domestic violence, sexual abuse, financial crimes, things often committed by people with mortgages, not tents. This ordinance shifts attention from real systemic issues to symptoms we can see and sweeps them out of sight. And let's talk about the data used to justify this. It lacks clear methodology, control variables, or credible statistical analysis. If we're going to claim crime is on the rise, we need real evidence, not cherry picked anecdotes or rumor fueled pressure. The city has said this is about eight or nine individuals. If this is true, a sweeping ordinance affecting everyone is an overly broad and imprecise solution. It's not creative and it's not fair. The JIB committee created an equity impact assessment tool that council approved for reviewing ordinances just like this. Based on what I've read in the ordinance, this hasn't happened. Uh, by opposing this, we are saying we don't believe this will work and want to discuss different solutions, not just respond to a proposal. So let's have a real public forum, not a reactive opportunity. Um, because I really do agree with the gentleman was saying earlier, this is super frustrating, but this is not going to solve the problem. Um, but the good news, city has already shown a better way. The unhoused community committee, the council's support for proactive outreach are all strong. Um, thoughtful steps forward and you've been doing this work. So let's keep going in that direction towards funding housing, harm reduction, mental health care, public restrooms, shelter options. Uh, we don't need a new ordinance. So please vote no.
Thank you. Uh, Rachel, you're, you're online, Rachel. Thanks. Oh, and if you mind, I'm sorry. I've been forgetting. If everyone, i, if you could, when you're going to speak, if you could, uh, and yeah, I am really generous with giving you a lot of time because I'm a generous kind of guy. Um, but if you could state your name for the record when you start, that would be really great for the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, my name is Rachel Van Vliet. While I am a Berrytown resident, I am employed by the Berry Unified Union School District. Um, and I work closely with students, um, who currently in my role, I work closely with students who have some behavioral challenges. Um, I'm fortunate enough to work some with a board certified behavior analyst to look at some of the concerning behaviors we see, identify the function of it, what are the underlying unmet needs, and then talk about consequences as well as reinforcers or ways to meet the students' needs. Um, when I think about some students, we give detentions. That works for a lot of people. However, I have some students who, they have the behavior, they get a detention, nothing changes. Um, and it's just consequence after consequence, the same thing. And that doesn't really matter to them. I think about many of these, many people who would, um, be ticketed or charged, um, or whatever the verbiage is. Um, I'm not sure how it would impact them. If they have to pay a fine, they don't have the money. Or I don't know if it gets to the point of me needing to be jailed or, um, anything like that. Well, many people are unhoused. At least they have a safe place to sleep for the night. Um, so I think what's really important is considering, um, the unmet needs of these individuals. Um, and just as so many people have mentioned, um, mental health is a huge underlying issue. Um, and paired with addiction, um, not having housing, not having, um, jobs or income coming in. And as, I do agree that there should be consequences for behaviors and I don't think folks are anyone saying, you should just be able to do whatever you want and not have a consequence. However, we can't just give consequences out without, um, helping meet the function of the behavior and reinforcing it and giving the support. So if we are going to be doing something, giving a consequence, I'm, would hope that we would also think about how can we meet the unmet need of these, um, individuals and who maybe it's, they don't have housing. Again, Danielle mentioned there are many organizations doing great work and the city has supported that. Um, I just wonder the amount of time, effort and perhaps money that is going into this, I would hope would also equally go into preventive work and meeting the underlying needs. So thank you. And I'm, I'm glad we're having these discussions. Um, but I think it's really important that we don't jump and be reactive because we feel uncomfortable. The last thing, I just remembered, I meant to say this before. Um, someone had mentioned, um, that behaviors can be, come escalated based on how we respond. Um, and I think about that in my work all the time. If I have a student who's swearing and I swear back at them, obviously I wouldn't do that. Or if I raise my voice to address it, that could escalate the behavior. Um, I wonder what opportunities, um, community members have to learn more about, um, de-escalation training or responding, um, in these instances. And I was really excited to hear about the crisis intervention training. Um, and I wonder if some of that, whatever would be appropriate, could be pro, offered to community members or business owners, um, and all of that. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Yes.
Melton Bell, um, Berry City resident. I'm, I'm deeply disturbed by this ordinance, partially because it emanates from Brattleboro and they rescinded it. And obviously they're revisiting it and coming back with something else. But that's an indicator that this specific document probably wasn't working down there. And, you know, I understand that we have a population that partially is frightening and partially is really has problems. Also at the, um, the meeting, the public safety meeting, one of the things I heard over and over again was that most of the complaints were about a few people, not a lot, but to the tune of maybe eight, 10 people. Is, did I hear that incorrectly?
No, we were talking about the statistics of how, how frequently we deal with a certain eight to 10 people.
Yep.
I provided statistics. Um, here we do have people that come and go. So I can't say whether it's eight or 10 people, but there's, there are people come. And, and just today, we were out with the manager and we, we heard from some folks at the library that said, there's a whole new group, group of people. Um, so, you know, I can't, I can't specify if it's always going to be the same eight or 10 people.
And I, I in fact have seen that there seems to be a whole new group of people. I, I just really caution you to take this up right now. I, or to accept it tonight because it, it is very vague. It does punish certain kinds of people. It may help some of the folks who really need the help. I think I also heard the state's attorney that night say that, you know, if we're going to start arresting people and this and that and the other thing, that it's going to go slowly through the courts. And, and then I'm looking at the nation as a whole and how we are in a very reactive state. And it's easy to jump on that bandwagon. I'm really concerned that we could go overboard. So if we're going to do an ordinance, I'd like to see more thought and thoughtfulness put into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's really weird being in this.
It's very weird being in your seat while you're over there.
Christopher Roberts online. Thanks.
Um, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, my name is Christopher Roberts. I'm the chair of the Committee on Justice Equity, Diversity, Inclusion and Belonging. And it's JIB. Um, I'm going to be brief. Uh, I appreciate all the comments that have been made here this evening and, um, uh, the committee was formed by council, uh, five years ago, um, for a variety of reasons, but part of our charge is to look at policies and of the city exactly like this proposed ordinance. And I would, um, like to go on record to encourage, um, the council to consider, um, having this ordinance vetted, uh, through our equity assessment tool that we developed a few years ago. Um, the committee's prepared to do that and give you our findings. Uh, I think it would be instructive and, um, I'm hoping that you will, uh, consider doing that before you enact this ordinance or anything similar to it. Um, and that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
May I jump in briefly? I just want to clarify the timeline here that the ordinance will not be enacted after this evening. So I actually do hope the gentleman. So I actually do hope the Jed I B committee has the opportunity to do that review, because we've still got a little ways yet before it moves forward, and I would appreciate hearing their feedback.
Well, I mean, technically, we have a lot of ways. We could move this to, which is what I hope happens, this could move to a second hearing. And then at that point, I think Nicholas, it was you that made the comment, you know, we can refine ordinances. It's not difficult to amend an ordinance, to change an ordinance. If we find that parts of it aren't working, or parts of it need to be repealed, we can certainly do that. I mean, there's a process for it. But I think, I think that would be the better process. So I agree with you that, yes, it's not going to be enacted this evening. Hopefully, it'll be moved to a second hearing, and then it doesn't go into effect, you know, it's 30 days from, 30 days, correct, from that date. So, with that.
I've been waiting.
I'm sorry?
I've been waiting, and I'd like to speak. Thank you.
You love to challenge me, don't you, Ellen?
Excuse me?
It's okay.
My name is Ellen Kay, and I'm a resident of Berry City. I wanted to just start out before I say my prepared remarks to say that I am, I lived in Brattleboro for 22 years. I was a member of the representative town meeting, which has gotten some short shrift here. Representative town meeting is the legislature-approved form of government in Berry City. So for the representative town meeting to reject and rescind this type of ordinance is not a small thing. It is how government works there. There is no new proposal there yet. I had that confirmed to me tonight from two members of the representative town meeting. So I just want that for the record, to be very clear. This proposed ordinance is the attempt of a small group of business and property owners to rid our community of human beings that they see as undesirable, or at least to make them invisible. Poverty is so unpleasant to see, isn't it? It reminds us of what our lives could be, and for many of us, missing a paycheck or two, had we not been born with advantages, or were lucky enough to gain opportunities at the right place and right time to climb out of it. Seeing poor people might provoke in us uncomfortable feelings of guilt. It might provoke fear that leads us to react out of that mix of emotions in irrational ways, losing access to our compassion that we extend to others in our lives, in our neighborhoods, and in our communities. And it may lead us to react to judgment, with judgment and condemnation. That's a lot of what I'm hearing in this entire discussion, back at the public safety meeting and tonight. There's a difference between feeling threatened and being threatened. Listen carefully to the language of those who are pushing this ordinance, and you will hear very few, if any, examples of actual violence and threats, but a lot about the fears of those things. What we do with these uncomfortable feelings makes all the difference. Do we pass ordinances that round up all of the so-called undesirables, or people who don't fit, don't look like us, however we want to interpret that? Or do we learn how to respond to our own discomfort and fear? As people who have a greater degree of safety and security in our everyday lives, roofs over our heads, a home we can call our own, with doors that lock, privacy, access to food, a steady income, it's our responsibility to build the skills to not escalate a situation that makes us uncomfortable. Business and property owners in Berry City, many of whom live in Berry Town, have steadily stoked fear about unhoused people and others in desperate situations. The constant drumbeat about safety has reinforced the specter of scary Berry, which many of us have worked hard to undo. It has provided the rationale for increasing camera surveillance and is now being used to push through an ordinance which will criminalize and further ostracize and isolate poor people in our community, trampled their First Amendment rights and rights to due process in the name of cleaning up our city. As others have articulated, this ordinance is overly broad, to the point of being meaningless and likely unconstitutional. If the city council enacts this ordinance, it will be cynically using the fear that many have stoked to violate the rights of residents, and especially of those who deserve relief, care, compassion, housing, services, food, and to be treated like the human beings that they are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Ellen, online.
Now, city leadership shows a bias toward the merchant, real estate, and business class. For many years, our visible Main Street has been the primary focus of the city's attention. Idea being that the image of a safe, peaceful downtown will encourage shoppers, B&amp;B guests, and diners to flock here. Real estate developers will invest, and landlords will attract renters. This is not about, this discussion is not about community safety, it's about the image of Main Street safety. There's no care about speeders and drivers through the neighborhood, there's care about Main Street. No care about deafening trains, blare, deafening, deafening train blares disturbing sleeping rates. Residents need to be reminded that we pay the lion's share of the city's tax dollars, whether we own or rent. Now, let's demand the lion's share of services, like a fully functioning and up-to-date sewage treatment plant, like a flood-resilient culvert of floodway and river system, like law-maintained streets, like a reduction, like a reduction in noise and air pollution, like city buildings that comply with the American Disabilities Act, like safe needle exchanges. You know, we have to begin caring about each other in a deeper way, not just the image of what our downtown looks like to attract people, but to think about the people who live in the neighborhoods, the people who experience equally disturbing behaviors in their neighborhoods. So I just want to remind us that, you know, we're spending a lot of time on this issue, which is fine, but let's spend an equal amount of time figuring out how to actually serve people who suffer from these things that we are now trying to criminalize.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Tom, Tom Treason, Berry City resident. I'm a little confused as to a couple of things. One, there's things in here that are already illegal, plain as day. Why do they need to be in there? The second thing is that none of this addresses any of the underlying causes, none of it. It doesn't address homelessness, drug addiction, house, none of it. It doesn't address any of the underlying causes. It's out of sight, out of mind, criminalizing things that are illegal. Smoking is legal. Having drug paraphernalia is legal. It doesn't say, it doesn't mention, like, there's multiple dispensaries downtown where you can buy paraphernalia, walk around with it. Is that illegal now? Okay? And that's what my big concern, there's things that are already illegal, why put them in this ordinance? And the second, it doesn't address any of the underlying causes. Finally, I want to, I want to offer up, it's not a solution, I don't want to use that word, but it's a, it's a tool, possibly. Why couldn't we create a committee of people, volunteers, that are trained in first aid, conflict resolution, opioid issues? They have a list of community service, they have, they knowledgeable about all the community services that we have available in town. That those people have a uniform of something, they're, we had the Berry Bees, the teenagers, riding their bikes around town. We could have adults doing the same thing, that patrol these areas. There's a lot of people that have time on their hands, I see them posting online about all the things that happen. And so if we could create a committee of people who were trained, who would just be a face out in the community, you guys can deal with other things as well, because you're already, I mean, as I might walk over here, there were five people sitting directly under the sign that said no smoking at the library. It's already illegal. Why, why do we need an ordinance? I didn't, I can't believe we can pee in public here, but that's crazy. But, anyway, that's my, my offer is, is to create some sort of thing to help the police, and then help these people at the same time, and not criminalize everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, oh, yes.
Hi, I'm Michelle Donnelly. I am a Berry City resident, and I'm also the state's attorney for Washington County. I think that there is some pretty serious work to be done before something like this could be enacted. I think there are some things in here that could be helpful to the city to address some concerns that people have very clearly voiced, that they want the city council to take action on. But there are also concerns in here that the voices have been equally clear, that they want to, that they don't think that this ordinance will address. The, one of the things that keeps coming up is about whether, like, this is a civil ordinance, and the word criminalization has been used a lot today, and I just want people's expectations to be very clear about what kind of road, what kind of consequence this really is. First of all, I think a civil ordinance is way wiser than a criminal ordinance. My player tried criminal ordinances for a little while. I talked to their city attorney, who said that they never once, a single time, won a criminal ordinance case, because the judges were very frustrated to have something that low-level on the docket to deal with, and that oftentimes, the person who'd be issued, who would be, you know, issued a citation for a criminal ordinance at the same time would be facing other criminal charges, and then those criminal charges would address a consequence that would kind of envelop that criminal ordinance. So pretty much every single criminal ordinance would get thrown out. So these are civil ordinances, which means that they're going to have, be the equivalent of tickets, and they are fine-only resolutions here, and that they are not going to, they're not going to rise up to the level of something that I am going to see as the state's attorney, and that's going to appear in the criminal court. So the level of consequences that we're talking about here are not in the criminal realm. And I do think that a lot of the people who might be issued tickets for these civil, for violations of these civil ordinances are very likely also facing criminal charges at the same time, and they're already, already being brought into the criminal system. And so I just think that there's, I'm not saying that it's a reason to vote down the ordinance, but I do think that it's something to think about when we're thinking about limited resources and how we're, and where we're going to deploy them, if a lot of people are going to be, you know, facing a consequence in another location that is also funded by the taxpayers. So that is something to think about. I've heard the question asked a lot here about, doesn't the, the ordinance as it's written, doesn't it already cover a lot of behavior that is already criminal? And that is true. And I think it's something for the council to consider, and the, and the citizens that are listening and are engaged on this issue, of whether that's a pro or a con. It could be a negative to, to have two, an ordinance and a law that are trying to attack the same behavior, but it could also be a positive to try to attack that behavior in a way that is not criminal, and it's not sending somebody to the criminal court, but is rather dealing with it in the moment with a, with a lesser penalty, with a fine. And it would be up to the discretion of the law enforcement officer to determine in that moment, do I want to write an affidavit and send this up to the criminal court for criminal prosecution, or do I want to write a civil ticket? So, like, having it in both places, it could be a pro, it could be a real con, though, about why we're going to, you know, why we would have it in both places, and what would be used, and how would we decide to do that? So, and I think that the, one of the, one of the biggest things to readdress, though, as other people have said tonight, is there is some very vague language in the ordinance that, as an attorney who goes to court every day and argues about the meaning of words, I am concerned about how loose some of these definitions could be, and I think that that could be a problem for the city. I think it could be a problem for the enforcement, and I think it's, that tightening up what is really trying to be addressed here would be my biggest concern with the ordinance as it is written currently.
Thank you. That reminds me, I'd love to have you back for the council again to discuss just the effectiveness of the court system and how things are going. Could I call you at the office?
You absolutely can.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you. Okay, council, at this time, let's see, nope, nobody else online. The appropriate warning, or appropriate motion, excuse me, if you're so inclined, would be to move this to a second hearing.
So move.
Is there a second? It's moved and seconded, is ready to discussion. Hearing none, all those who favor the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Ayes have it.
Could we get a roll call on that, please?
Yes, we can. Counselor Ruth here.
Yes.
Counselor Spalding.
No.
Counselor Bergeron.
Aye.
I am an aye. Counselor Augustine.
Nay.
Counselor Hilgar, Hilgard.
Nay.
Counselor Hilgarden, thank you. Counselor Deering.
I am an aye.
Okay. All right, council, we'll move on to item 8D on the agenda. This is our flood resiliency pan, plan update.
Thank you, Chief.
Counselor Augustine.
Thank you, chief, appreciate your time.
I would just like to say that I also like to count the TIF development as a flood resiliency plan update, because it does discuss the seminary housing development, which is in the flood plan. If you let me, I can make almost anything about the flood resiliency plan.
One of the reasons we like.
It's, it's something. It is something. I, I take my talents where I can get them. All right. So, background, how we got here, just again, we adopted the flood plan on November 12th, 2024. And as laid out in the plan, we looked at this a little bit in the last presentation, in the last meeting, every six to 12 months, we will, if you throw on me.
Oh, sorry.
We'll conduct a full review of the plan. So we are in full, thank you, full review mode. At the last meeting, we looked at which provisions of the plan have been updated in previous meetings. Tonight, I have a couple of sort of discussion points and questions for council around how we're going to go about doing that. So, next slide, please.
There we, there we go.
Okay. So, May 6th, 2025, we already did this, previous flood plan updates. For various reasons, we've, I've already started a public comment process that I will go over in just a minute, that includes meetings, and next week will include survey feedback, and we'll talk about that further in just a minute. May 20, 2025 brings us up to this evening, when reviewing the update process. And just to be clear, the, the goal for tonight is to talk about process, and as I've stated before, we're spending a long time on it this time, because it's our first time. So I want to really thoroughly talk through it as a council. I don't expect us to do, what, one, two, three, four council meetings updating the plan in November, when we get to do it again in six more months. So on June 3rd, based on the feedback from public comment, based on the conversations with council, we will look together at proposed changes to plan, to the plan, and we'll talk a little bit about what changes might mean in a little bit. And the goal, which can shift, if council wants to keep this conversation going, the goal will be to adopt an updated plan on June 17, 2025. Any questions on that timeline? Okay, next. Okay, so here's our first discussion point for the evening. What do we consider done? And just to reiterate a point that came up at a previous meeting, the flood resiliency plan is designed so that nothing is ever removed from it, things are moved into different sections. sections. It might be moved into a completed projects section, and I could envision, part of this plan does envision that we also might simply say, this project is no longer a fit for our goals as Berry City, has hadn't been completed, it hasn't failed, we just, we've realized, there's a million reasons, right? We've realized we don't longer want to pursue it. So, it will be moved into a separate section of that plan. So, everything, the work will always be shown somewhere in the plan. So, if we consider a project done, it simply moves to the finished projects portion of the plan. So, I have sort of three brainstorming, three rough categories here of what we might consider done. The project is well underway, but still has some hurdles. An example of that is the DPW garage section of the plan, which we have moved substantially along, but there are still permitting questions. We have not broken ground on it yet. We have not cut the fancy ribbon. So, do we not yet consider that done? Another example would be key elements of the project as named have been completed, but we could do more. We could redefine that goal and say, you know what, we really liked the work we've been doing under this goal. Let's talk about it a little bit differently. So, resident education is an example of that. Technically, the resident education section calls for doing workshops and things like that. We have now completed, and I will present in a future meeting when we're done process updating, what we did with those workshops, but we've done them. Did we like the, what we were doing enough to say, we're committed to keeping this goal, we just want to revisit it, or do we want to say, you know what, we feel like, we feel like that's been done, we don't want to revisit it? And then, another option process is in the process of execution. An example of that is the Seminary Street Housing. We got briefed on that tonight, that they are expecting to break ground next spring, but there are still, what I would hopefully describe as very minor regulatory hurdles to getting that project done. Obviously, there's a lot of, like, gray area in between here, like, we could, you know, we could, we could look at all sorts of nuances of the word done, but I wanted to put just a couple of options up there and pose the question for council, look for feedback, as I look at the plan, and try to sort of, like, think about this. And if you've looked at the plan, I'd send it out to everyone as a reminder ahead of the meeting, and you, you're like, yep, there is, I've, I've looked at this, this is a thing, cross it off, I think it's done. I think this is a good moment to have that conversation. So, I will, I will toss it out. Not yet. Not yet.
Not yet? No.
We're in discussion mode.
Sorry.
So, is there any, is there any feedback on any of this?
I mean, I think a project is done when it's done. It's not, it's not done.
Okay.
Amy, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I think that's a really interesting question. I want to say done. I think some great things will be done, like maybe things about a building, like when you move the DPW garage up, or when a house is either demolished or razed, like, that's kind of a, a specific event. I think part of the problem with all of this is so much more of it is about maintenance. So, you clean the streets, you're not done. You're done for that time. You don't have to do it again. Which, by the way, in Berlin Street, there's so much mud on the streets that there's some really interesting stream dynamics that developed from the, from the heavy rainfall. So, if you, if you, I've ever wondered about how meanders develop, you can see them in the mud, because the street needs to be cleaned, and the storm drains need to be cleaned again, because that's just what happens. You know, in cases where we remove a house on a riverbank, because unfortunately, we, you know, we're going through the, the buyout on that. Then, that turns into the task of developing it into a proper floodplain that's not just going to erode. And then, over time, you can't just leave that alone forever. It's less active maintenance, it's less of a discreet events, but I think it turns into, again, ongoing maintenance. So, you know, floodplanes, maintain the vegetation on them, you know, storm drains, stormwater detention ponds, that kind of thing, even if it's sort of a settling pond to slow runoff or to, to capture sediments. It doesn't, I think those things go, they're never done, unfortunately. They move into more maintenance. And I think, again, all the things on education, you're never done with education, right? You've got new city residents, you've got new issues and stuff. That's how I would frame it, is there are some things that discreetly are going to be done, and some of them that change from one task to another type of task, hopefully in a good direction. And then, sometimes there are things that just require ongoing maintenance.
Oh, was there another question? Yeah.
Oh, no, I was, I was just going to say, I agree with Amy, and I think that there are some things that are easy to say they're done. The trestle is down. Done. Check it off the list, right?
It's gone.
But I think there are other things that are probably more in a continuum, and we have to think about what that continuum looks like. And some of them, you know, like, when the DPW garage, once we move in, can we check it off and just say we're done? Probably. But I think there are some things that, to Amy's point, like, like, stormwater, storm drains, like, those are gonna, that's just a constant, that's going to be a constant thing that we're going to have to, we're never going to say we're done. It's just never going to happen. So, I think some things, maybe we have to start thinking about which things are the things that we will be able to say, yes, it's done, and check it off, and move it to a done section, and then other things that are going to always be on the list, and then all the others are going to fall in between.
Yeah. So, thank you, council. That, that, this is not a fully formed thought yet, so I'm going to try and work my way through it. But I, there may be some way we can and should capture things that move out of active project phase and into maintenance phase, and then we say, these are all the things that the city does on a regular basis as part of normal business that do speak to flood resiliency, cleaning out the storm drains. Maybe once we accomplish a goal of, of buyouts along houses and, and planting the floodplain, it becomes a regular maintenance of the floodplain, is, is captured in a maintenance section. And I'm sort of just thinking in my head about, when things are in that main portion of the plan, right now, we have 21 projects in the plan. I'm not wedded to that number, but I'd rather not go too much higher, because we're going to start to divert our attention. They are active, ongoing, we're chasing them hard, you know, we have to move major pieces to get them in there. There may be an argument for moving things off that are not quite done, and then in six months, we go, oh, no, we need to yank that back out. It, it got delayed, or we, we did that. The, a good thing about this is that we can look forward in six months and say, you know what, we made a mistake on, on calling that done, we need to revisit it or reword it. So, I don't know if that, like, answers the done question, but these are sort of things going through my head right now around how, how do we quantify what our focus is on?
Good question. It's, I mean, you mentioned, for example, cleaning out storm drains. That's something that shouldn't even be on this list. That's.
Yeah, it's not currently.
Yeah. Well, no, it's operation. You know, mapping is. We have mapping and assessment, you know, in terms of capacity, that's on the list, and that's appropriate. So, I think, I mean, could you have an in-process, could you have an in-process section of the list where it's not entirely completed, but we're not just talking about it?
Right.
We're physically, you know, that would be an appropriate bucket for the DPW garage. It, it's in process.
Yeah.
We're actively working on it, and we anticipate, you know, full completion in the spring of, or summer of 2026. And then, it gives you something to look at and say, you know, the, the assessment of our storm system. We have a date certain, it needs, and we could even give ourselves 30 days wiggle room. I would consider that in process. The hydrology study, I'd consider that in process. So, I think we have a lot of things in process. We have a lot of things that, you know, North Berry, I think we all know, we haven't done anything. I was just going to say. We haven't had that. Not to get off the subject, but like. We need to do something. Yeah. Is that on the list? It is. It is. I mean, that's a big problem. And we need to move that forward. So, I think we need a few different categories.
So, just, just to address briefly, a regular, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm off the cuff trying to remember where it is in the future projects plan. Planning on a regular cleanout for storm drains and citizen adopt a storm drain program are in the potential future projects list for sure. So, they could be, if any of, if that appeals to any of you, that's actually one of the ones I'd like to move up to a, a project, because I had a really cool conversation with some folks who run and adopt a storm drain program.
Can we add dredge into it?
Like, a lot of fun. We could certainly have that conversation, could go into the future projects list, or could go in the current projects list. We would have to have that. This is part of what I'm trying to do, is have this conversation for all of us, because we have adopted, you know, it is a council product. I want to speak briefly to the mayor. I'm, I don't have a, this is, it's a really interesting idea of what it looks like, because what we have committed to is updating at every council meeting some piece of the main plan. So, what does it look like to have a, I'm failing at words a little bit, but a section of the plan that's like, they're humming along, we don't need to update them at every council meeting, but in six months, we check on them, and either we move them back to the main list because they need attention and focus, or we, they are done. The hydrology study is delivered, that, you know, the, the housing ribbon has been cut. What does it look like to have a, not main focus, but?
In process.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we have staff meetings weekly where we talk about engagements, and sometimes we, we literally go through the list of everything, you know, everyone that's a partner in charge. We go through, so it might be, edit, you know, okay, DPW garage, and Nicholas gives us the same, you know, we have where it's at. Now, and then, at the next meeting, we say DPW garage, and Nicholas can say, no change. You know, we're still in the permitting process, because we're not expected to be, you know, completed with that until November of '25.
Yeah.
So, I would say an in-process section where you, you know, a short list of, list of projects, where they're at, and the anticipated movement date. Yes?
Can I add some more complexity?
Please.
One, one way that I think about these projects, too, is, not just these projects, but projects in general, is have we surpassed, have we completed the parts of it that are beyond our control, right? So, Public Works Garage, we needed Berry Town approval.
Yeah.
We needed, you know, so that was a big one that was, until that got done, I didn't feel great about it, right? So, that's, you know, Seminary Street, we need a bond vote.
Yeah.
Right? So, that's out of our control, really. That's in the voter's hands. So, that's another, just to give you some more complexity, because I know you wanted some, another layer of.
Look, the more, the better.
Yeah, another layer of, like, has, you know, has this particular proj, is it, is incumbent on us and staff to get it done, or are we dependent on some external entity that we don't have control over to, to, you know, to get to the finish line?
Yeah. So, I actually, I'm sorry, did you want to?
I just wanted to jump in and say, have you actually included benchmarks in, in all of these projects? Because this sounds a little bit like that kind of discussion.
So, not really. This, we'll get, there's a slide in a minute.
We, we're familiar with them, and we probably know what the benchmarks are, but I agree with you, it would be.
Yeah, it's a little.
Like, you know, we, we have engagement due dates, and, and you put a date on it. And if you find yourself, you know, as someone who's responsible for these engagements, if you find yourself constantly pushing the date forward, then I'm not doing a good job managing, you know, something's wrong, something's gone wrong. So, if we're not advancing, so we should, as far as I'm concerned, every project should have an advancement date. When does it hit the next step? And if we find ourselves constantly pushing those dates forward, we're not managing our projects. We're just kicking the can down the road.
I think that's a good idea to add. I do want to briefly address the city managers, which, absolutely valid. There are, there are projects on this list that we needed, the trestle is a great example. We knew upfront, we put that in the plan, we knew upfront that, that Berry City's role in that was purely advocacy, that we, the agency of transportation was the responsible entity to have to remove that trestle. So, I would say to that, to some degree, we have accounted for that in the plan by identifying the owner and partners, and like, what the, and we, and we had spelled out, this was some feedback when we wrote the first plan, what the city's role is in each of these projects. So, in some cases, it does say, the city is this, or the city is the convener, or the, the advocacy, and in some cases, the city can do it entirely. I, I think that there is some combination of the advancement date the mayor suggested, a benchmark process, that, and this can be part of updates and the plan update, to say, we've hit a wall on this. You know, this, this wall is outside of our control. It's other municipal entities, or, or state, or, God, God, all those national entities, that we cannot make progress on this. So, we are going to have to either reconsider the city's role and keep pushing hard on it, because we still think it's really important, or this has to move to, we, we sort of accepted that this isn't going to be changeable. So, I wonder if, to some degree, those things are on like a case-by-case basis, say, we, we may not be able to move this ourselves, but we still think it's really important, so we have to keep, and maybe that's, you know, a benchmark date is our sign that we need to double down on advocacy for something. But like, pure brainstorming, just trying to make this into a, a workable thing. So, that, those are, that's my initial thought to that. So, any?
Yeah.
The other?
No, all good questions.
Okay. All right. So, I will, I will, I'm working in the background, I'm looking at the pieces, so I will, I will sort of take your feedback into account as I sort of try and categorize where we are on various projects. All right, May 20 to 24, that's this week. I was at Foxy's this morning, 7:30 to 9:00 AM. I figured since I'm there half of the week anyway, that's where I would hold coffee hours. So, if you would like to have a one-on-one conversation with me and some ridiculously good pastries, please stop by Foxy's from 7:30 to 9:00 AM every day this week, except Friday, when I have to leave at 8:45. So, and then, Saturday, I will be there at a slightly different hour that I will update you on later, because they open later than I remembered. Tentative evening event, I'm working right now with the Aldrich Library on doing an evening event for different hours, where it could be a community, community conversation, where a bunch of people can come in and, and give feedback on the plan. We had done these in the fall around the adoption of the plan. We did ward-level meetings that were fairly high-level detail of, of what feedback do you have on the plan. I would envision one community meeting to get feedback from folks on what they see in the plan, what they would like to see added to the future projects, or the main projects list. I have started drafting, but have not finalized a public survey, because I wanted a little bit of this conversation tonight to inform the structure of that survey that will be shared publicly next week, and will have opportunities for feedback as well for folks who can't come to a meeting. They will be able to do that. And then, city council conversations, we're having the one tonight on May 20th. On June 3rd, I have already drafted the, the PowerPoint of what it will look like to look at pieces of the plan and say, these pieces have moved into this phase or this other phase. And I have, like, tentative, like, my pet projects from the future projects, but I already know that's going to change with the public feedback that people give me, and have not at all yet drafted things to go into the future project section. So, that is a wide open, and we should keep adding to that, because then that becomes a process by which it's part of the public plan as a future project, and then it can sort of move up through the pipeline, and is available for people to see and give feedback on, straight on through. So, any questions about the section? Okay. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I just want to say thanks for all the opportunities to me.
You're welcome.
All my notes at home for tomorrow.
I look forward to it. Yeah.
Amy, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, is the November 2024 plan that's in the city website, is that kind of the current one, or do you have kind of an intermediate that you've made some updates on, based on all the things that have been done?
Okay, so, that is the, the currently adopted plan that is on the city website. What I have been doing in sort of the background is I turned on track changes on a Word document. It's, it's a mess. It's not really a great public response document. I would be very happy to send it to you, because I know that, that you will enjoy looking through all the little changes and updates I've made. I've tried to go week by week after each council meeting where we updated a thing, or if something happens, I've tried to go in and include the dates of when we moved things and things like that. So, it's all tracked. That's part of the, what we wanted to do with it. I would think for general public feedback, if people want to take a look at it, the, the one on the website is probably the easiest and best one to take a look at, and you're not missing anything from my extremely complicated track changes document. But if you want that, I am very happy to share it with you. It just, it looks, it's a lot. So. Did you have a?
No, I was just going to say that Amy was online, looking to speak.
Okay. So, I, we already know we have some, and you've added more structural changes for me tonight. We already know we have some structural changes. Yes, do you have feedback?
No, I was just going to say, I could probably cover you for the remainder of Friday, so that you don't have to.
Oh, okay. Thank you. We'll, we'll talk.
It's great.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, so, we already have some structural changes that we know need to go in. Grading in a rubric system was something that was raised as a structural change that did not make it into the first plan, because we wanted to get to the finish line. So, what this is, is an incorp, a rubric for prioritization of projects within the plan. It could include potential factors like urgency, the funding outlook, the feasibility. It could include potential factors like urgency, the funding outlook, the feasibility that would help guide us towards what we need to be focusing on. I think this is a useful tool. I've also been thinking about this a lot. I think we've actually been doing a pretty darn good job of focusing on all of the projects at, at plans. So we've been getting steady updates. What I think a rubric could add as a dimension is, is give us an extra sense of urgency. If, if we really have identified together a project that is just top level, that could just, that could push it forward. It could mean more frequent updates and that kind of thing. More resources, I have, every time I find a study or a report or a document related to anything you can possibly imagine to rivers or flooding in Berry City, I've been saving it. I have literally dozens and dozens of them at this point. So the, I've been saving them, I've been trying to rename them so they make more sense because some of them are just letters and numbers in the, in the document name. So my goal will be to finish turning those all into like actually legible file names and then to link them all in the resources section of the plan. So if you wanted to read every, and I find new ones, I feel like weekly at this point, but if you wanted to read all of the studies and the this, that, and the other thing, they're all linked in the plan to show what we have been looking at in the past. And then, sorry.
Be curious to see what you have on selective riverbed maintenance.
I will take a look. It's literally dozens, but I'll take a look and see what's in there. Thank you. Polished final version. I, I wanted to get this ready after the fall and my graphic design skills are just not there. So I do, I do still want to do a designed and more publicly shareable version of the plan. I'm imagining there's something like one page for each section that just lists the projects as like one lines. And then people can go to the actual plan for the more full description of it. But a nice shiny document that we can include in grants to say, we have thought about this deeply, we have adopted a strategic plan as a body, and this thing we want to do is underlined by that public work. So I just think that will be a nice value add for the plan. So for sure, those are going to happen as part of this update already. Okay. Future projects. This is the section, this is another discussion point for council, as I had said. As far as I'm concerned, we can and should add a ton of future ideas for projects in there. I would say that generally speaking, for new councilors, projects, and you can take a look in the plan at the way that they are described, they are usually not, do this precise, exact, specific thing. They are explore ways to do this or resolve this challenge. And then we sort of explore through that project, figuring out how to do the thing. And that's, that's how we do through, have been doing through the update process. So are there any council, yes?
I'm a big fan of being able to combine different aspects into another, you know, different aspects or different problems into one, one solution or unified solution. And one of the things that keeps coming up is our traffic calming measures. And I would like us to explore ways to combine traffic calming measures with rainwater runoff measures because there, I know there are some really creative things that people have done in other municipalities where they've put in, you know, median strips or permeable parking strips on, you know, that, that combine to both narrow the roadway and deal with runoff.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anything else?
Under public education, I would love, or I'm sorry, resident education. I know, I've heard, maybe they've talked about it here, but there was, there's like a water table where you can?
Yeah.
But it would be really cool to have that. Like, I don't know if here at a council meeting or like at the Aldrich for like a, you know, like a Saturday morning kind of thing. I mean, I just think it would be really interesting to understand because I don't understand how water work, I mean, yes, like in a general sense, but like if you do this, then what happens? And so I just think that would be really great to?
Yeah.
Be able to see it.
I've worked with the people who do that through my day job before, so I'll, I'll reach back out to those contact. I think that would be super cool too. I think that's a great fit for, we've had really, really good engagement at the Aldrich Saturday events. And like so much so that people are emailing me like all sorts of ideas. I'm supposed to have a, a meeting with a state person on Thursday about something they want to do and things like that for future workshops. And I had, I'd been like toying with like, what would an old water table look like? And I think like Saturday morning at the Aldrich might be, might be a perfect fit for, for a phone water table.
People talk about it at Heritage Festival. Sorry.
That's all right.
Sorry.
The River Access. People talk about doing it at the Heritage Festival.
Oh, that'd be cool.
Cool. Thank you.
I don't know if this year, but it was something.
You'd get a lot of people there.
Yes?
Yeah. Thank you, Byrne.
Do you have something you want to say?
No, I was just going to say just about the same thing is that I talked to Danielle about the, thank you, but I talked to Danielle on the River Task Force about trying to do an event. So I think we could partner and probably do something even more jammy than Saturday at the Aldrich that could really pull in more people than the 15 to 20.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yes, Kajah.
I was fortunate to go to the Boston Aquarium in the last couple of months and they have something similar to that. It was just really nice to be able to play with things and to see, you know, how the effects are when you put dams in or certain aspects of water blockage or just different things going into the water system and just how it interacted.
Montreux might be a good resource for that too. Yep. Especially kid-friendly stuff. They have a whole. Oh, yeah.
State, yes.
Yeah.
Some burger and children. Excuse.
I wonder if, you know, like thinking about that rain event that happened on Saturday, I wonder if there's a way, I'm kind of, I'm sort of like brainstorming. If there's a way for, I think about all the people who like call in or, or send their, you know, their rain totals into the weather, you know? And like, is there a way for people to say, hey, my street is flooding. Hey, my, this storm drain that I just drove by is not, is not taking water. Like, is there a way that we could set up a system so that people could input information and then we could act on it or go and investigate? Because you have lots of people out there and they're all just posting on Facebook and that's not really helpful. So how do we get them to, you know, put it into a, a system that we can then do something about it? Because I think there's lots of people who want to help, it's just capturing it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a, it's a easy to access and straightforward. Yeah. Like, what does that look like? I, I will say that, and I'm reviewing it with the city manager and the director of Public Works right now to make sure there's no red flags about this program, but the Adopt a Storm Drain program could be legitimately really, could be a really cool, not quite what your staff is about, but yeah.
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 When that happened, I actually called the mayor because my wife and I, we spent a couple of hours just driving around or three because I didn't, really didn't want this to happen on my watch right off to what she's saying. So we all have phone numbers. So I really thought I'd get some people calling me, you know, to see if I'm aware or if I'm out, which I was, you know? So I guess I agree with, with her on that. I just, you think they would utilize our phone numbers more? Or maybe there's a, you know, one area they, you know, put it back and get all our numbers, so to speak.
Yeah. I think people are not fans of phone calls anymore.
Are you looking at something like what we previously had, C Click Fix?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I was thinking that, that was a tool we used to have. I mean, unfortunately, that, it, it didn't get a lot of use. I think it probably didn't roll out really well. So there may be tools similar to that, that, that could function though. But yeah, that's the first thing that came to mind.
That was just thrown out and we, we weren't prepared for it.
Really, the best thing is dispatch. Good old fashioned dispatch. Because in an event like that, seeing things spiral out of control so quickly, you've really, you, you, you can't rely on someone to log on to a system, think about how to use it, click in the wrong place. It's just better off if they, real quick, in and out, dispatch and the manager knows who to send.
And I think in any, in any situation that's like an emergency, my street is flooding or help get me, 1,000% dispatch. I think there might be an interesting like middle ground here where people can report what happens during the storm, but it's information we look at later. Like, we are not at all, like, in the moment, we are dealing with urgent, whatever is emerging. But afterwards, we go, oh, okay, well, that's a good sign that that street's storm drains are, are clogging up faster than we thought they were. Something like that. They might be interesting.
I will say as a comment, if I may, I loved that app. The C Click Fix. I use it multiple times.
You might have been the only person coming.
I, I, I loved it. And I honestly, it worked. It was so great.
Yeah. So think of the condition of our roads. Think of what it would look like if we actually had that today.
Well, and maybe there just has to be some.
Everybody would be clicking and expecting us to fix it.
No, but then maybe there has to be some constraints around it, you know? I don't know.
Yeah. What, what, what does like a thoughtful, like managed, you know, data gathering, but not, I expect a 30-minute response to mine?
Right.
Yeah.
Counselor hearing?
So I think we could even do something as simple as like a Google form where we put on our, our website and then also you can, the Google form translates into data. So you can have the data and give the user end as well. And it gives people a voice so that they feel like they're heard and the city also is enabled to compile the data and let them know, all right, yeah, we, we definitely see that there's an issue with this particular situation or, you know, oh, you might be the only one experiencing that. So it might go to the lower threshold or something.
We need to develop our own app. We do. We'll incorporate Google Maps so that you click on the spot and then you explain what the issue is. And you have the person rank it in terms of, okay, as a citizen, how high a priority do you think this is? I think it'd be kind of cool. Yes?
Yeah.
Thanks. I really want to say, I appreciate the regroup, the little messages, we're checking things. This is what the river looks like right now. Those are, I don't live in a place that's low, so I might not be so concerned about it, but I find that helpful because then I can say, oh, I wonder if I need to check in with some friend that lives downtown and see if they're safe. So that's really great feedback. And I really liked C Click Fix too. And we used it quite a lot. And it has a feedback loop. And that's one of the things is, okay, we received this message. This is being addressed or this is not being addressed. You know, this is a long term. And so there's a place for the DPW to respond so that you know it's there and you don't have to keep telling people that Allen Street has washed out so much on one side and there are such big holes down the middle that people are going up the wrong side of the road on a curve. So that's the kind of thing I could show you in a C Click Fix. Or the giant potholes that are so big that I might lose my car in them on Prospect Street. So I hope those are just things that, you know, we can think about as a feedback loop because then I know that you heard me once or you got my text or my email. And I probably am not going to call up a counselor about something that's happening because you're not in a position to order emergency services if there's an emergency. I agree with the mayor, if you have an emergency, then you need to call dispatch, you need to call that 911 number. And I will just say, while I'm here and I'm sorry I didn't say it, but I want to be on the public record for saying that a few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to engage with emergency services from a couple of communities three different times over the course of a week or so. And Berry City first responders and EMTs are the best trained, the best performing, the most considerate, the most thorough. And I share this with officer, with the fire chiefs and Chief Vale. Because it was so, the difference was so remarkable in a team that came in from another community and how they responded to someone who had been injured, an elderly person in a social event. Their care was careless and it wasn't professional in the way that I would have expected it to be for someone who had an injury where they didn't know what was wrong. And then the other two places were where they came in with somebody who, it was, I think a mistake and it wasn't an overdose, it was somebody who confused their medication because they're, they're not well and had a diabetic issue. And the team that showed up to make sure that person was safe was right there on the ball, asking the right questions, checking the person, you know, doing everything and getting them out of the building, which was a little tricky. So that's, that's just one of the things I wanted to say, how well-trained our people are and how much I appreciated their services. And I've shared this with the, the heads of those departments, but I wanted to do it in a place where you all heard it. And so you know, when we're spending our money on that part of it, that it's really worth it. Thanks.
Thank you, Byrne.
Thanks, Byrne.
All right. Last, and you all know where to reach me by email. And now for breakfast, if you have anything else that you'd like to add. But I think, I think that we have done it. I will work up this feedback from folks and, and keep moving forward on, on my formulation of, of what might go where for the next iteration of the plan. Thank you, Byrne.
Over the next probably four weeks, I'm just going to be obsessed with the CDBGDR process. I just am.
Yeah.
Because it is the biggest opportunity that Berry City will see in a very, very, very long time. I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate the, I mean, you know, 24, and we all say it anecdotally, 24 was 25% of 23. 23 was, you know, the big show. So with over $50 million hitting Washington County and as we look at the communities, you know, as we compare losses in each community, I mean, this is a huge opportunity for us. So that's where honestly, I'm going to be obsessed with that over the next four weeks and making sure that we have capacity. I will circle back to the secretary, by the way, tomorrow morning.
I do have a question about that.
Yes.
How likely is it that that, I mean, watching what's going on on the national stage, how likely is it that that money will get clawed back by the government before we actually see it?
Everyone has asked that.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't give you, with this administration, I can't give anyone a money-back guarantee. But everyone that I speak to at state or federal government has a very, in business, we call the money going hard. Everybody in state and federal government is reasonably assured that that money has gone hard.
I do want to just add because, you know, as the mayor said, I've been in all of these, these feedback meetings as well, and that is a question that keeps coming up. In the meeting last Thursday night, that was asked, and what they did say, the money is already in escrow.
Yeah.
So, I mean, clawback is, I guess, still a possibility, but it's like, it's way, I mean, it's, it's like, yeah, it's, it's even further along the process than, than the vast majority of what, I mean, I lost, I lost grants at my day job, so this is, this is something I have lived as well. So, but yeah, but I found that comforting when they said that in the meeting last week.
So that's really, you know, as a council, as a city, these are huge opportunities for the city. And obviously, I know there are other municipalities in Washington County that, that were hurt in the 23 event. I'm not their mayor, so I want Berry City to have it all. So that's the way it is. Yes?
I just do want to add to that, the, they have sets of rubrics about how they're awarding the funding, the 80% for Washington County has been, has been mentioned. But there are also strong scoring impetuses to score a grant more highly when it is for communities that have lower than the county median income. It's not statewide, it's county median income. So there are other boxes that Berry City ticks beyond, just as we all know, having had the most flood damage in 2023, that put us had the most flood damage in 2023 that put us depressingly for us, but good for the specific program, put us very favorably positioned for this specific funding, so.
And what's the total on how, I mean, huge.
It's like 42 million for housing?
Yeah, huge emphasis on housing. So we can certainly make the case, as Counselor Augustin said, I mean, we make a lot of cases. We, Montpelier really didn't lose any housing units. We did.
Right.
Montpelier doesn't have a north end type area that was affected and hasn't yet recovered. We do. So, you know, we can make a very strong case. We just have to make sure that we put ourselves in that position, so. And we're working on it every day, I promise. Okay, anything else, Counselor?
No, I think that covers it. Thank you.
Sorry.
I just think that covers it. Thank you.
Okay. Then we'll move on to upcoming businesses or anything that a counselor would like to see on the agenda? Like I said, my, my focus as mayor is winding down over the next two weeks, having legislature wind down, making sure that things, and it's been a good session for Berry so far. We want to make sure it stays that way. And then the CDBGDR process and, and making sure that, that our manager and our staff have the resources that they need to take full advantage of those projects. So that's kind of what I'm working on. I don't know if there's anything else, Counselor, but yes, sir.
When we circle back to the Civic Center money.
Yeah.
Can we get an update on the Sanders earmark fund?
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, and those are, yes?
Can we also get an update on the, where I should have asked, where the BADC is on their fundraising?
600, oh, you mean for 143?
Yeah.
600-ish?
Over, right over 600.
They got a thermometer in the front window. Look at that when you're driving by.
I saw that, but then I had heard that they had secured all the, they had gotten, they had fundraised all the money. I heard two different things, so.
I haven't heard that.
I just wanted to confirm it. That's what I was trying to.
Yeah, I mean, I can give, I'll, I'll shoot you all an e, I'll just give Josh a call tomorrow and shoot you all an email.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was a tick.
There's a six.
Yeah, 650-ish or something like that's where I thought it was.
Includes the 400.
Yes.
And so they've raised 200 something.
Okay, roundtable. Counselor Earring?
Thursday night, there's going to be an Empty Bowls event at the Labor Hall that will be put on by Berry City School and some others in our community. It's a great opportunity to raise funds for a democracy-led food pantry. The students have voted on which food pantry they'd like to support with the funds that they're going to raise. It's $10 to $15 a bowl. It's going to be an amazing event. I know Rise Up Bakery is providing some stuff. There's a lot of different opportunities for this. So if you can come out and support on Thursday night, I think it's 6:00 to 7:30. Almost positive.
5:30 to 7:00.
5:30 to 7:00.
I have it right here.
All right.
I was going to talk about it too.
All right.
Counselor Hillgardner?
That was on my list too. I don't have anything else.
Counselor Augustin?
Very brief additional shout out to that, which is that Pam Wilson, who's board member for Berry Up and doing a ton of flood resilience stuff, has also been the artist in residence working with the students to make those bowls. She wears many hats and she does it well. So I will say that I have been in communication with, I have lost track of how many consultants, but there's good work going on on the River Access Task Force's master plan. And there are two river walks coming up in the, before our next council meeting, the 28th and the 31st. And these are opportunities for folks to walk the river with knowledgeable, experienced people who are gathering feedback about how we interact with the river and also some feedback about how we might transform what we know are going to be at least three green spaces left from FEMA flood buyouts. So their, their job is to gather feedback about what those might look like and how those might serve the community. So you will learn things and be able to give your feedback on those. There's tons of information online, but I would go to the River Access Task Force. Folks, they've been sharing them most prominently.
That's a pleasure.
I'd like to thank the Berry veterans for putting the flags up on Main Street. They look great. And the flags for veterans at the cemeteries, they get those all done. I know we don't meet next weekend, there's, there's a parade for Friday, the 30th.
Yes.
Did they, did they already get their permit for that?
Yeah. Ron, remember Ron came in?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, Ron came in a few weeks back.
Good, thanks.
And yeah, we'll be there. Counselor Spolley?
I just wanted to say welcome to our new city counselors and our old.
Kind of new, old, new. I like new, old better.
Okay, new, old city counselors. And I also, because we didn't get a chance to say, we got a chance to say thank you to Mel when she was here.
Yeah.
And I'm pointing to Amanda now, but it was here all backup and it will be. I also wanted to say thank you to Sam, who served for many years and served her ward three constituents. And so I just wanted to recognize her because we didn't get a chance to say goodbye to her, so. And that's all.
Counselor Rithier?
No, you know, I have big shoes to fill. I understand that and I, I appreciate the chance and thank you all. Look forward and work with all of you.
Fantastic. Likewise, welcome to both of you. I should have opened the meeting with that. I, I apologize. And I will be there. It's the 30th, I think the parade steps off, you're all invited, by the way. The parade steps off at, be there at 10 o'clock, you'll be fine. Because the ceremony is always 11 o'clock in the park. So I think it's about 10:30. They actually step off.
They step off at 10:30.
And in the event of inclement weather, they, they use the auditorium, but.
That's where they step off.
You know, honestly, it's, you know, it's Memorial Day, not Veterans Day, it's Memorial Day. It's to remember, you know, men and women who haven't come home. And there's no greater honor than representing the city, you know, with all of our veterans. They do, Ron in particular does, just does such a fantastic job, so.
They always do it.
So you're all welcome if you'd like to attend on Friday, the 30th. And with that, I don't think you need an executive session, so an motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, like I got to ask, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.